Morning, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Please silence your cell phones and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. If you want to speak on something, please fill out a speaker request form and bring it to the front. We're all present today, so Deb Hadcock, Commissioner Hadcock, will lead us in a moment of silence and the pledge. Thank you.
Pledge. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I remember when I was a little kid and we used to say the prayer or the pledge every day at school was interesting and was kind of made you feel good. So we will move on to review and approve the agenda.
No move. Second.
We have a motion from Dur and a second by Drews to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to item number six. The Board of Commission uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda contains the following items, and I do know that we will be removing item J from the consent agenda and we will handle J separately. Is there any other items that need to be removed from the consent agenda from the audience? We have something, okay?
Item A is one of the...
Which was it?
A.
Oh, you have it right here. A. So we'll remove item A and we'll handle that separately. And then is there anything from the commission other than item J? So absent of item A and item J, can we get a motion?
So move.
Second.
A motion from Dur and a second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to item J or A, I'm sorry. And we do have a speaker request form on item A. Chet, if you're in the, if you want to just come forward and give your name for the record, and then you were speaking on item six A, sir.
Chet Ellsworth, Rapid City. Yeah, I'm asking the board to remove from the consent agenda six A, the September sixteenth meeting minutes and place on the regular agenda what you've done for controversial and non-routine items. Item twelve, the fraud exposed in the audit, leading, according to the record here, leading to the high-risk entity designation. Seventeen B and seventeen A, transition of payroll responsibilities. I believe there was a transition that did occur there by a high-risk entity. On twelve, the questions that I have and my concern is the references to the conversations and documents concerning a fraud violation letter were never given to the public, exposed, and involving Lisa Marso, Carol Bancroft, and HR Department. Second, and with this concern was Bruce Hince's September second, twenty-five threat of the high-risk entity designation if the report wasn't resolved by the nine thirty twenty-five public deadline. As far as I know, I looked this morning, and the report has not been released to the public by Russ Olson or the auditor, from what I understand. On seventeen B and eighteen A, transition of payroll responsibilities moving and moving to create the county payroll work group, authorizing HR to add two positions. My concern isn't what that isn't, that it isn't what has actually happened. The transition of payroll responsibilities to an unelected official, Ms. Bancroft, by a high-risk entity, which you would be now, the commission, is a breakdown in the separation of powers. The transition incorporated the commission. The commission communized its departments, HR and auditor, having previously done so to the Treasury Department, thereby communizing its constituency, a declaration and definition of communism. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth. Okay, so we are on item six A. Do we have a motion from the commission?
We have J to do. We have one more to speak to.
We can approve A.
J.
We can approve A, though.
Can I do it independently?
Sure.
Yeah, we'll just do them independently. Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion.
Yep.
Second.
I'm sorry. I have a motion from Hadcock, second by Dur. I apologize. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to item J.
Item J, so under the personnel changes, you know, we had a kind of thirty-day freeze on some of the promotions and hiring, and we lifted that, and so we have multiple personnel changes on here. And I'm just going to make a comment about the changes in the treasurer's office. So the treasurer's office has, I believe, nine personnel changes and promoting individuals from admin support to tax entitlement assistant. And I'm just going to make a comment on that, that I support those changes. I believe that some of these lower positions, which is what we will look at in the future that I've asked HR to look at, we've talked about during the budget process. But I think in the treasurer's office, with the amount of job descriptions that they have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven different job descriptions for the office, as we look at getting the FTE count set coming in January, and that's one of the things that I would like to see for January, that when we approve the FTEs, that we set those by the job description so that we're saying that we're funding X amount of positions. But I do support the treasurer's office promoting these individuals to a higher level pay. And I think that we need to look at maybe some of the lower-end positions we have on the scale, even though we've given a four-point-four percent pay increase, that maybe some of these starting positions that are quite relevant to the county, for example, in the treasurer's office, that between now and January, we look at, you know, maybe having some of these entry-level positions start at a higher wage, and that's my comment.
Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dur. Commissioner Hadcock, you have the floor.
So the only thing I have is if you're going to reclass new hire or do a promotion, that you have it in your budget and don't ask for supplements at the end of year when you hopefully put those in your budget. So I think most people have, but if that comes up, I would hope that all these positions that we are promoting and reclassing and doing new hires and that we have that in our budgets. Thank you.
So I just, Commissioner Ross Connect or Commissioner Drews, do you guys have a question?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Drews, you have the floor.
In regard to the treasurer's office, I just, I don't want to see us taking away the opportunity for the treasurer. She has a system for training and promotion, and I don't want to see us taking away that opportunity for her to do the promotion as she's been doing.
I just want to make a comment as I went through the budget process and trying to get a handle on why job descriptions are important, and this is particularly one of those reasons is being able to budget properly, that you have job descriptions and you can actually forecast what may take place in a budget in the future. So as we roll forward, this has been a very good process for everybody, but, you know, when we started the process, we didn't even know how many employees we had.
True.
So I think we're getting that narrowed down, if I'm correct, the director, Deb. So we're getting it narrowed down to how many employees we have in each department. Then we're going to go from there to start narrowing down job descriptions and start narrowing down efficiencies as we go through. As part of the commission is challenged with audits of all the departments, and we'll be conducting those as we move forward, but it's taking time. We're in the middle of a move right now, so I appreciate this. And so do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve item J.
Second.
I have a motion from Dur and a second by Hadcock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. We'll move on to item seven. Items from the public. Speaker request form is required. Action will not be taken during this section on any issues brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this section will be recorded in the minutes by name and area of interest. And we do have one speaker request form from Mr. Chet Ellsworth. Are you available, Chet?
Yep.
Come forward and then just go ahead and we'll get three minutes to...
Chet Ellsworth, Rapid City, to discuss the TIF election and its delay. Apparently, last night, there was an election by the city to go ahead with an election, but there's a delay being caused by the county, putting this date late into the winter, and certainly a disruption in our minds. We have had a lot of opposition, speaking as a, as a, one of the TIF people. I'm greatly appreciative of all the folks that have come behind us and signed this petition, but it's faced an unbelievable amount of opposition. We've got opposition from a lot of the people that, that want to keep the property tax, a lot of people that want to keep the sales tax and increase this tax with more property tax. It's led to isolation in a lot of means, ways, having an election being delayed for no apparent reason to the middle of the winter when people have gone south and maybe forgot what the issues are. I just want to name some of the people that we've run into in opposition and have had to face, and that's the governor himself, South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, Tyler, Bison, E S and S, Thompson Reuters, Zirker Technologies, Sarah Frankenstein, The Rapid City Journal, Lisa Hansen Marso, Laurel Rutzel, Cindy Moller, Susan Kapke, Hanny Shaffey, Visit Rapid City, Rapid City, the, the secret opioid committee that's been formed, that nobody has any idea what they're doing, and the county itself. We intend to find some way to protect ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth. We're going to move on to item number eight.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to make a couple of comments.
I hesitate to do that, but I understand if you're going to keep it to the TIF.
Correct.
Yeah, I think you, you explained it earlier to somebody, so we'll allow this.
So a couple of, and it's going to be back to his other one because I want to alleviate something that may be out there. We're not a high-risk entity, and so the legislative audit asked us to sign a management letter, and we refused to sign because the chairman was not here at the time. We made an amendment in our response to the management letter, and the management letter was approved and signed by the board, and so we met that deadline for legislative audit. So Pennington County is not a high-risk entity, and so that one is off the table. Number two, because the journal did ask the question a few minutes ago, the city came to the auditor and said that they wanted to have that special election in November, and the auditor's response was not that we wouldn't do a special election, but the timing in November was not working for her office. And one, the county is making a move from this location to the concourse building, and that's going to start at the end of this month and transition through November. And so the auditor is legitimately have, going to be down in staff. And so there is no opposition from the county on the TIF. In fact, you know, the county many months ago, I believe, sent a letter to the city about our concern on TIF, so those are my clarifying points.
Thank you, Commissioner Dur, for trying to unmudie that water a little bit. I was, I'll address it again when it comes to items from commissioners because I think that we don't want to have information that may be not solid as we would like to have. So we'll move on to item eight. Publicly submitted items, please see the commission office for policy and form. St. Joseph Street, Silver City Concerns, Victor and William. Okay. Victor and William Donahue, and we have two speaker request forms on this item, too. So I guess Kathy Druckery, are you here? We'll allow you to come forward on item number eight. St. Joseph, St. Joseph Street, Silver City Concerns, Victor and William Donahue. So Doria, I'm sorry, Victoria, could you state your name for the record, please, and then just go ahead?
I'm Kathy Druckery, and we have property in Silver City down the road on St. Joe Street from this couple. And over the years, we have noticed a decline in the care for the road, St. Joe Street. And over the years, I have called and visited with the highway department requesting that they take care of that particular road, and they were kind enough to go ahead and put new gravel down, which was budgeted in your budget about four years ago. That finally happened last year because of the new bridge. We had to wait for the gravel trucks to be able to cross the bridge because of weight limits. They did not get St. Joe Street done, so when I asked, they said, well, can you be patient? We'll take care of it in two thousand and twenty-five. And we've been patient. They said that they had to coordinate their schedule based on weather and putting snowplows on their trucks, et cetera. So I figured that would probably occur this summer, but that road has not had any major maintenance done that I'm aware of for about ten years. It is in need of maintenance. I am also aware that the highway department is recommending the possibility of Silver City looking at a road district, but at this time, we are currently paying taxes, have paid taxes for a number of years for road maintenance, and that road maintenance has not occurred on St. Joe Street. And so that is my comment. I would hope that they would fulfill our request from a number of years ago to maintain that road like they have all of the rest of the roads in Silver City. Do you have any questions? Me?
Does the commission have any questions on that? I have one myself. You said you were paying into what fund? Were you paying into?
It's the unorganized road tax that is on our tax statement. Last year, we were assessed about seventy-five dollars. This year, it jumped to one hundred and twelve on an annual basis.
So Robert Druckery, are you here? You are also on my list to speak? Did you want to speak, Robert? Okay. So I guess, can we bring Joe forward?
Well, I believe...
Joe, are you here? Thanks. Can you explain to us? I mean, most of our roads are in road districts, so maybe you can explain this road for us a little bit.
Oh, you can stand there. That way you can throw the map.
Yeah, you can, if we have a question.
You got it, Jordan? Okay. State that question again, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, the question, can you explain the concerns here on the road? What is, what is the county's role on this road?
So Silver City, I've, I've researched the, as to the why Silver City's been placed on the county highway system and been unfruitful, I guess, unsuccessful in finding out why exactly Silver City of all the towns and townships in the, in the county that we have, why Silver City was placed on the highway system many, many years ago. It's been on the system since I've been here, much to, I believe, Kathy, is that what your name? Kathy's point, the maintenance was lacking for several years due to the fact that we could not get a motor grader or our gravel trucks in there due to a weight-limited bridge. That bridge was replaced, I believe, three years ago now. Is it two years? Time eludes me. So two years ago, and once that bridge was replaced, that summer, we did go in and gravel Sherman Street, and we gravled Main Street, and we gravled Dugan Street. St. Joseph, however, is very narrow, and as you can see from the pictures, we struggled to get a motor grader or...
That's the road that's in the red. Can you point it out to us?
I'm talking to a colorblind guy here, so...
Oh, sorry.
It's the furthest one on the south side there, so...
Right there.
And there, you can kind of see the jog there. There was an agreement many, many years ago with Highway Superintendent Heine Jungy to move that right-of-way further south, because if you look at the pictures, and Jordan, if you jump on Google Earth or Google Maps, you can kind of drive the road from east to west, and it shows you the narrowness and the, the obstructions that are in it that kind of hinder us from laying gravel and successfully maintaining it as one of our, as we do all of the rest of our roads, so...
I guess that's the question is, why is it like that? Why, why, why are we maintaining the road? Good question.
I know you don't like the answer, but that's because it's, that's because, it's because what, that's what we've always done.
Okay. So is there, can we come to a compromise or something that says we, we put it back into some kind of condition and hand it over?
If that's the board's wishes, we could certainly work towards that sort of an agreement. You know, the unorganized road tax that she spoke to here a couple of minutes ago, that goes to maintain all of the unorganized roads in the entire Pennington County. So I believe there's about four hundred and fifty miles on our secondary road list, and that's what that goes to. The total amount in that fund that we get every year is about two-point-nine million dollars, I believe, is what it is for two thousand and twenty-six. Jordan, you want me to come? I'll show you. Got it? Kind of.
I guess I'd look to the commission to see on some direction here if we...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Ross.
So Joe, the unorganized road tax that they pay now, if they did a road district, would they still be obligated to pay that tax?
Nope. So if they form a road district, that tax goes away and it goes into their own levy. So whatever the road district so chooses to levy, it could be the unorganized road tax, it could be less than that unorganized road tax, but it all goes into their own fund, and they can utilize it just like the county does to maintain their roads. And as you can see, the road is very, very narrow.
So they indicated that, you know, they've been paying that unorganized road tax, so as Ron mentioned, a compromise, if we're going to suggest the road district, that I would like to at least get those roads in fair condition before they would switch over to road district.
Yep, and I would be in agreement with that. You know, I don't know the, on St. Joe there, the, it's not really there to be able to widen it, so we would have to gravel it as is to the best of our ability. Our equipment's just not, not set up to do something that narrow and to get proper drainage established, but we would do what we could and then bring together a transition plan if that's what the board chooses.
So opposed to gravel, which, you know, washes out pretty easy, could we consider recycled asphalt?
That's very expensive.
Well, we're, we're making that transition. I'm trying to find the compromise. I'm just afraid gravel just doesn't have a long shelf life, but that's up to the commission.
Joe, just for gravel, for, for reality's sake, can you tell us what this gravel's going to cost? Just gravel it.
So the gravel that we got, this gravel would likely come out of Pete Lean and Sons. I believe it's thirteen dollars and fifty cents a ton. On a twenty-four-foot roadway for one mile, it roughly takes about sixteen hundred tons of gravel to do a two-inch lift, and that's generally what we do every eight years, is an eight-inch lift.
Whip your calculator out there, sir. Thank you.
So you're talking roughly about twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars for a mile of gravel. I don't believe this is a mile. I don't know exactly what the length of it is.
So Joe, when you say mile, are you talking about all the internal roads or streets in Silver City?
No, no, no. That was just the average cost of a mile of gravel is, is about, you know, our cost. This stuff would come out of Pete Lean and Sons, which our current bid for two thousand and twenty-five, which is good through, I believe, March, Sean? March of two thousand and twenty-six, when we do our annual bids again, would be about twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars to gravel a mile at two inches.
But that picture right there, what's the width of that street there?
We measured it. I believe it ranges anywhere from ten to twelve to fourteen feet, depending on where you're at on the road, going the, the length of it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ross, after you're done, because... Commissioner Hadcock, you have the floor.
No. Young lady would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, it's Kathy again. I just have a point that I would like to make, and that is many of us on the roads in Silver City have, in fact, honored the property and right-of-way dimensions. This road, if you were to take and look at the survey, the road is not properly in the right place, and if it were in the correct place, we wouldn't have an issue with the width. It would be in accordance with regulations, and it's a matter of time that this road has developed to where it is today.
And I can tell you, the county basically has not been in the business of doing these types of roads. Somewhere along the line, somebody made a commitment to it. Joe's trying to fulfill the commitment the best he can, and what we're saying is that we would like to bring this back to, I believe, what, I'm not, we'll have a vote on it or whatever, but like be fair as we can, gravel this thing, and then, but then Silver City understands that that's it. The county will not be, you know, doing a, a, a non-county highway or road, and it would be best interest for the Silver City to, to have a road district to, to take care of it into the future. But it looks like it's been this way for a long time, so...
It has been. It's in really poor shape, and it does get traffic.
Having it brought back to fair condition allows plenty of time to accumulate funds to be able to handle the road with the road district.
Chair.
Commissioner.
If I could finish. I just wanted her to be able to speak. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
So Joe, this isn't a road district. You said we took it over.
No, this has been on the county highway system since I've been here and since, I believe, the, I mean, for as long as I could find the research. I don't know why it was placed on the county highway system many years ago, but it's one of the only instances of this nature in the county that the, a city of this nature is on the county highway system.
Okay, and have we ever paved or done any of this for any other district for spending twenty-one thousand for a road that is in twenty-four feet or even up for you guys is going to be able to get in there and dump gravel and make that road acceptable with twenty-one thousand dollars? My bottom line is, how many roads like this have we done in other districts? And is there any other districts that have these kind of roads that we need to do this as well?
I guess I'm not necessarily following your direction there. Like I said, this is one of the only instances in the county that a road is of this nature in Silver City. So like Awonka, New Underwood, Quinn, all of the smaller counties throughout the rest of the, the county, they're either incorporated or they take care of their own roads.
Okay, so we're going to spend twenty-one thousand on something. I'd like the road improved, I'll just tell you that. I just want to make sure we're doing what we always do for everybody else in their districts, let alone spending twenty-one thousand for a road that's not twenty-four feet. Is your bid basically, or what you're saying, per square mile, eight-inch lift for twenty-one thousand, is that for a twenty-four-foot road?
Correct, and that's just a guesstimate shoot, shoot from the hip. I'm not going to stand by that estimate. That's doing math on the fly up here, which sometimes I'm not very good at, so...
So it's probably going to be lower.
I would think so.
Well, it's not twenty-four feet. It's probably, it looks about ten to twelve if you're lucky, Ms. Drucker. Yeah.
And if I may, I mean, you can see the, the houses and the sheds. If you drive, you know, you can use Google Earth to kind of go along the entire road, and there's trees, there's sheds of that, you know, just very, very close to the road. So to establish proper drainage and stuff, it's going to be difficult, but we can do the best we can. And to be clear, this is on the county highway system. Our recommendation is to remove this from the highway system and have Silver City form its own road district to then take care of its own road. To then take care of its own road. Uh, we are in agreement to bring the road up to whatever standard we can to the best of our ability. Um, and then turn it over to the road district and. If I may, I, I did talk to Phil Schleif, the, um, uh, who is the fire chief up there in Silver City. Yesterday and kind of, uh, informed him of the intent or what our recommendation was here. Um, and he unfortunately wasn't able to be here, um. Didn't have a whole lot to say about it, um, that I recall, so.
So Joe, when you did your policy on no maintenance in those different areas that you didn't look at this area for? What was going to happen on the road system? Remember you redid like New Underwood and other places, you just forgot to do Silver City?
No, and we looked at all of it, right, and these were. These weren't driveway roads, i- if you remember back to. Um, when we were talking about the no maintenance and minimum maintenance stuff, those were. Roads to driveways, right, um. To one house or two houses is kind of how we had it split up.
Right.
And this is multiple houses, so it didn't hit the radar at that time.
Right. I'm just saying that we looked at all of them, I thought maybe we'd catch. Catch this one as well, or let alone Silver City, if we were gonna change our rules and policies on roads. Um, we need to look at all districts, so thank you.
Commissioner Dur, you have the floor.
So, Silver City is unincorporated? No town council, no form of government, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
If I may, um, they do have a, I don't know if it's a legal association, but they have the. Garbage Association that takes care of their garbage dumpsters that. I believe part of the community pays into, to, for the. Use of the, the community dumpsters, um, so they have a form of a council, I don't think it's a legal authority though.
It is a private organization, it's called an association, but it is not representative of the community. Because not everyone participates in it, um.
Alright, I don't see what picking them trash has to do with this, but.
Okay, if I may offer some history. If I may offer some history. One of the reasons that Silver City may be on the list for road maintenance is because a commissioner. Many, many, many years ago, by the name of Collins. From Collins Buffalo Ranch was commissioner and he was prime in getting the Silver City Road blacktopped. Back in the early sixties, and it's entirely possible if we look back in that history that it may be, that that's where some of this comes from. I do know personally. That I would be very appreciative if the county would bring things up. To standards so that we could access this particular road, all the other roads in Silver City are taken care of. Except this one. And. I think that if the neighbors were contacted and notified that you were going to be working on the road. That we would try and make an attempt. So that you would have easy access for your big trucks. And your grader to get in, to work, to bring it up to standard, we're not expecting twenty-four foot road. But we would appreciate, and I'm saying that personally, I would appreciate, um, two inches of gravel. On that with the road that we see here.
Mister.
Commissioner Roskin.
Commissioner Dur.
Yeah, I'm not done yet.
Commissioner Roskin, you have the floor, sir.
He's not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I'll, I'll wait.
Alright.
I'm really winning today.
Alright, so, yeah. The, uh, getting back to, you know, Silver City in itself, I have a question, Joe. So, does the county have a policy? Uh, about the formation of road districts, and so does the county have anything where we've set a policy? Uh, basically a resolution or anything in an ordinance about forming of road districts, and so setting. Uh, any type of dollar amount to that we're in. If a road district was gonna form. And you need to make sure that it's a viable road district, and so. Uh, the problem, the majority of the road districts have is that they think it's a great idea, so they form a road district and then they figure out they don't have the tax base to do the maintenance. And do that, and so, uh, some of those road districts then will come back. To the county and say, hey, can we contract you and have you do some of this work? You know, or bring a road up to standard, or every five years come in and do something because we don't have the equipment or the opportunity to do that. And so, you know, telling somebody to form a road district, uh, and then you need to go back and look at, you know. Legitimately, what they can, you know, garner from a tax base on that. And I'm not sure if that's ever been a discussion with the county. Or when a county, when a road district is formed. Uh, sometimes there is an agreement and an incentive because there is upfront cost. So when you form any district, taxing district, you have to do your publications, you have to. Uh, you know, typically get some legal advice to go through that, to hold an election. And do some of those things, and so. To your knowledge, and I don't know, I'm asking the question. Oh, so we're asking somebody to form a road district, does a county do anything to incentivize that, like? If you form a road district, we'll give you twenty-five hundred or five thousand dollars. Uh, to pay for the election and some of those things, and so just telling somebody to form a road district does not resolution. Uh, because in the long run, it doesn't always work out, so. Do you know, do we incentivize, or do we have anything in place that says? You know, what we would recommend for what size and what valuation based on? The infrastructure of the road and based on what we think, you know, would be. A legitimate, successful taxing entity to go ahead and take that over and maintain.
To my knowledge, no, there's nothing in place, um, or policy that, since I've been here, um, that's a very good point. Um, I think it would be a good thing for the county to incentivize that, um, to give them some sort of starting point. Um, I know there are state laws and, and whatnot that govern the road districts and how they're formed, but I don't know of a county policy, um, per se.
Alright, so I'm going to suggest when we're looking at something like this, that we look at all of that and Commissioner Ross connected to your district, but. I do know that, you know. Uh, it is costly to get a road district set up, getting legal and making sure you're following all that, because again, when she's set up a road district. You know, it's a governmental entity, and uh, once it's formed, the county has no input on that. And so if we're looking at getting some of these off our maintained road system. And we're saying that, you know, we're gonna try to set somebody up for success to take this over. Uh, that the county look at, you know, what we could do to help out to make sure it's successful, that we just don't say. Tag, you're it, you've been paying property tax for that secondary road levy all these years. And uh, we've made some commitments and we've had it on our maintained road list. Uh, but we have not been, you know, following through, it looks like, to maintain this. And I get the nuance of Silver City. And I'm, as we're having this conversation, I mean, I've talked about it before, my family, you know, founded Silver City. And I can just hear my grandmother right now, Ma Burke, going. I know why these roads are on the system because she would have had a hand in this, so. Anyway, but uh, you know, I think as we're looking at, you know, our entire system across the county. And we're gonna tell somebody to form a road district, uh, that maybe we have some skin in the game.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Roskin, sir.
And I like that idea, uh, Commissioner Dur. Uh, giving an example though, how the county can participate in a road district would be. Last week, I wanted to chip seal some of our roads in our subdivision, and so. County came up with their trucks, uh, we haven't got the invoice yet. But I'm sure the work they performed last week on our property. Uh, working through the county, it's gonna be a lot less expensive than if we would have had to gone through a private contractor, so. There's, to me, that's an incentive in a way, and it, and the material costs for a road district, you can buy it at the county's cost, so. Uh, just wanted to point that out, but Joe, what I was asked, gonna ask you, could you put that map up that we looked at the other day? To, to show if we go that direction, exactly what the county would be responsible for coming off of the Silver City Road. Going across the bridge at Rapid Creek. Uh, just, it's not like they're not gonna go in the Silver City, there is a. Certain segments of, uh, of the internal streets that the county has obligated to plow.
Yeah, so a- as you're looking at the map, um, and colors are awesome, so. Um, Sherman Street there, so the, our recommendation was to. Maintain Sherman Street up to its termini there at the, the south end of the, the Silver City there, which. Main, the bridge maintains under our control, which no matter what, we maintain control of the bridge. Because of its size, um, state law prohibits that, I believe going to a road district, I defer to our state's attorney on that, but. That way the, the bridge for sure stays in our, our realm, and then people can. Get into Silver City, um, and the, the fire station is right there at the north end of the street there, so. Um, and to Ron's point, you know, we are allowed to contract with road districts to get work done, um. In, in their road districts if need be, um, they're just required to pay for it, so it's not county highway paying for that material.
And closing, I guess I'd encourage, you know, as. Been discussed that we, if we decide to go that route, that we. Try to get those roads that are gonna be in the district. In a shape that would be, uh. Safer vehicle traffic and uh. Conducive to a, a good quality road.
And if I may, Chair, one, one comment to that, I think. The rest of them, to my knowledge, Dugan, Sherman, um, and Main Street are all in. Fair or adequate condition, it is just St. Joseph's Street. That has lacked the maintenance just due to its narrowness and, and the obstacles that, uh, for our big graders, so.
Commissioner Roskin, I, I just wanted a couple of comments and then maybe we can move on, but uh. When, when's the last time this road's had any maintenance?
I would say about ten years, maybe twelve years.
Okay, so twelve years.
I mean, we personally, you know, take care of our little area, kind of. But as far as any type of grading, um. Or any type of gravel replacement.
At least, I was thinking at least ten years probably too, so I guess my point being is if, I think everybody's in conclusion that. Gravelling this road to bring it to par is, is good, so even if you just gravelled it and it was at the par, you'd probably get another ten years out of it anyway.
It's possible, yeah.
But what happens in these areas is, is, you know, you'd form a road district and if they take care of that road, it could last a lot longer. But the, the county was restricted because of the, the bridge, they couldn't take their heavy equipment across, now they're available to do that. For some reason, it was on the, on the. Ch- on the map to, to have the county take over. Our superintendent is suggesting that it not be to be in, you know, to basically adhere to the same policies we do every place else. Um, but I do believe that at some point, we have an obligation to bring it to par and then hold it, then hand it over to the. To you got, to the, to the, to Silver City, however that forms, I mean, the people that live there, it's like a giant driveway is what it is, because it goes nowhere. Um, and all those people on that road. You know, so I, I, I think that'd be. Fair, but I, I guess it'd be up to the commission to decide if they wanna make, I mean, I think Joe's in. The superintendent's in favor, you're in favor of it, bringing it to par, but at that point, it's like handing it back. We just went through this with another road district that. You know, they, they were demanding, and what we've, we've brought the road to par for them, and then we told them on this date, it's your road, so. Um, trying to get consistent policy across the, the county, so.
Do we know when this might happen if we were to have gravel placed on this?
Great question.
So, this. If I may, Chair.
Chair, just, just one thing, I think you should bring it back, but we usually do is Joe comes back with a plan and the cost. At the next meeting, and then we all know how much it's gonna cost and what's gonna happen, if that's probably a better motion. If we could do it that way.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would say that this is, I, I, I think in our memo, we stated probably, we suggested a year transition period. To allow us time to bring it up to snuff and get it, uh, get it to where it needs to be, um. You know, if you want us to bring back a plan, I would request that we come back at the first meeting in November, um, as we will be at a road conference, uh. The second meeting in October here, the next meeting, so.
I think that's a better idea, that way we know the cost.
Yeah, it's up to the commission, I mean, I, I can, I'm ready to make a move right now, I don't like.
Mister Chair.
We don't have to make a motion today, he can just bring that back in November.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Um, this item was publicly submitted by Victoria and William Donahue, we should probably make sure that they have an opportunity to speak to it as well.
Oh, I thought, are they here? Come forward, I'm sorry, I thought it was a director who's that. I apologize. Like I said earlier, I'm winning all day long, I'm not sure what's going on.
I've never done this, so, but I just wanna include nine-two-zero. Or nine-two-zero-six R Road. Which is a little bit further up, which has huge ruts. Really dangerous, me and my sister have thrown a bunch of, um. Slate into it, cause they were like two feet deep. But you told me that it only went to nine-two.
So, yeah, so Ms. Donahue's, uh, prop- I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Donahue, correct?
Um, I wanna go up to nine-two-zero-one is what I want.
So her property there, um, and Jordan, if you jump back to Google Maps, you can kinda. They've, they've got a pretty good view of it, but. So the county, on the county highway system is the only, the first twenty-five hundred feet of St. Joe. East of high, or east of Sherman Street. So what she's requesting is for the rest of it to be put on the highway system. Um, now that, I mean, that, that's up to you guys, i- it's gonna be pretty difficult to bring up to, to standards, if you. If you look at the pictures that we've provided, um, so.
Who, I mean, Joe, who owns, who owns that road? I mean, who's, it's gotta be on somebody's land, right?
So it's platted public right-of-way. It's platted public right-of-way.
Platted public right-of-way.
So just because it's platted doesn't mean that it necessarily has a road authority.
Right.
Um, just because it's platted public right-of-way and.
Okay, so if we give you some time, can you figure that out for us?
Uh, right now, it's nobody's road, nobody maintains it, past a quarter mile east of Ha- of Sherman Street.
And how many houses are on there?
I think there's two past the end of it, right, there's yours and one more.
It's gonna be highly unlikely that. It goes on a highway map for two houses, I mean. I would think, but if we give you some time to.
Yeah.
To investigate this for us and, and be in touch with.
Yeah, I mean, i- is, uh, the request for us to bring back, back, excuse me. Bring back a transition plan to transition this to a road district, is that what the request is?
That's what I would say, I mean.
Chair, I think, I think the plan is to figure out what's going on right now and what you can do. And then that conversation on a road district can come back once you get that done. Because at that point, when you're out there, you can have conversations with them and then see. Um, what their plan is, cause to tell them they, that they need to come up with a plan. Right now, we just need to figure out what we need to do with their road with you. And then come back with the plan for the road district, what's happening next. And you don't need a motion for that, guys, he just has to bring back his stuff.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna let him leave here without a specific idea, I don't want him coming back in the, in November and go, oh, I thought this is what you wanted, so. Commission, let's make a decision here.
So, Mister Chair, a couple of comments.
Yep.
We keep talking about road district and take road district out of the picture because that is not our. That's not for us to decide.
Yep.
So we're not talking about a road district. From the commission's side, that is, you know, up to the residents up there to decide what they wanna do. I think what we're talking about is. Uh, getting the road maintained up to a standard. Uh, you know, because we've been, you know, taxing the individuals, the property owners with the secondary road levy. And we've not been performing maintenance, and it's on our maintained road list, so the conversation would be. Uh, go back. You know, it's on our maintained road list, get the roads up to standard, we've not been taking care of them for, you know, multiple reasons. And then the conversation would be, which I think where it's headed is, take it off the county maintained road list. And then have the citizens decide, you know, what it looks like for them once we take it off. And if we, because this question's gonna come up, if we take it off the county maintained road system. Are they still paying a levy?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so I think the other thing that we need to look at outside of Silver City is. Uh, do we have some of these entities? That when we look at getting back to what Commissioner Hatcock spoke about, because I know a couple, two or three years ago, the county just went through. And had a discussion about what was gonna be on the maintained road list, off the maintain, what's gonna be. A primary road, a secondary road, those conversations. Uh, but I think what we need to look at and, uh. Is with the, and it's a secondary discussion outside of this. But would the county do anything, if we're asking? In this case, think about forming a road district, would the county then have a discussion which would be a separate agenda item? About are we gonna do anything to incentivize these individuals to take over a unmaintained road?
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
And with that being said, I was gonna ask Jordan if he could figure out. How we would proceed with that idea, Jerry, to make it reality as far as that incentivize.
Do that with Joe. You do that with Joe.
Or they can work together, but I, I think we need the, I think that's a really good idea, because there's a lot of road districts out there. And, uh. It's expensive to have one, to set it up, and then if you get into a legal situation, it's the responsibility, where does law? where does law enforcement play, uh, maintain, so there's a lot of.
Right.
Variables.
If I may, Chair.
Yes, commi.
Jerry, if you want, go ahead.
No, I'm just going to say I do believe it is something, you know, the director for our office can work on. It's part of, you know, looking at policy and looking at, uh, you know, resolutions, that type of thing, so. And I do know, I'm just going to say at Mead County, we had a policy for that. And so when I was in Mead County, we, uh, that, the, getting back to what the state law requires for a road district, but what we did is we, you know, if you met the criteria, because we weren't going to fund you if we didn't think you were successful, and so you had to meet a certain property value level for the taxes based on, you know, uh, what you were trying to do, but, and I don't believe that Mead County is the only one. I think there's other ones out there that incentivize and help taxing entities, you know, get off the ground with some seed money, so.
All right, so Joe, I mean, almost, I want to make sure that everybody understands that we really have two dis, two separate things going on with the road. One part of it is the highway, uh, one of them is the county's already has possession basically of.
Correct, it's already on our maintain list.
So, our, what we want you to do is bring back a plan that says, you know, how are we going to ma, how are we going to bring that road to par, first of all. And then now we have Ms. Donahue's, uh, conversation about, because she's separate from, there's never been any road.
Correct.
Maintaining there, so how do we, you know, I guess the commission needs to give you guidance on, do you want to bring that back and what it would cost and, and, and everything like that to see if we could bring resolution to that for her or, so she knows going forward how she has to, to drive, so.
Yeah, I mean, that would be up to the commission. I, I think in, in years past, um, it's not been done a lot of times, but, um, there are sections that the county, the commission has directed us to spend money on, even though it is not on our highway system, um, to go bring it up to snuff. Um, you know, no man's land in the valley is a, is a good example of that and how we've been directed to do the snow removal, um, if it threatens health, life and safety, so.
So it would be okay if the commission directed you to visit this and give us like, you know, what it's going to cost to, to bring it up to par for the part that the, the county's been maintaining, and then what it would cost to, to, uh, fix the other part that the county hasn't been maintaining, and then we could make a good decision based on that information. And then as Commissioner Dur decided, if they want to do a road district, that's fine, but then at that same time, the commission can decide on if we want to transition out of this, which would be, make it consistent with how we've handled everything else. So I would think there would be a good chance that that probably would ha, happen. So, I mean, at some point, having that conversation with Silver City saying, you know, we're going to bring this road back to par, but this is not what the county does. So that way we handle it and that the road district would be on the people in Silver City if they decided whatever they want to do.
So I think the only decision that needs to be made by you guys today is Ms. Donahue's portion. Um, the rest of it, we'll take care of.
Well, that's my point. If you could just tell us what you're taking care of there and then what it would cost to do hers and, and the underlying issues that may be presented in doing that.
Yep.
And bring that back to the commission so we can make that decision. I don't think we're prepared to make that decision today.
No, we, we will bring back a cost and what it would be to bring Ms. Donahue's section up to snuff. In the meantime, we'll make a plan, um, to figure out how to get in there and, and put some gravel on the St. Joseph Street, um, with.
Who are doing that anyway, so.
Correct, with minimal disturbance. Um, you know, it's.
But I think time is of the essence for, for them. I mean, I think they've waited plenty of time, so, to have this done. I think the county, um, owes that to them or whatever, so. Take that under guidance when you're putting your plan together. We appreciate it, so. Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I was just going to ask the ladies, how did your soup event go?
I believe it was very successful and so is our building move, FYI.
Nice. And, uh, it looks like the substation's going along pretty good too over by the Sugar Shack.
Yes, it is. I'm not exactly sure of the timeline. You would have to check with the fire chief, um, on that, but it's coming along nicely. But I just want to personally thank the commission. You guys have been wonderful to support Silver City over the years. Additionally, Joe and his crew have been wonderful for snow removal for us, for the Sherman Street, and likewise, you guys have done a great job, so thanks. We appreciate all of your support.
Absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Ms. Donahue, do you understand what we're doing then?
Yeah.
We're going to take a look and see what you've got going on up there. Um, Joe will be your contact for that, and then the co, the commission will make a decision on how they want to handle that road and, and, and help advise you in the best way we can.
Wonderful.
Is that fair enough?
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, perfect, okay.
So Chair, we understand.
Yes.
First meeting in November.
Yeah, okay. Here's, Ms. Donahue, he'll be, he'll get back to us the first part, week in November and hopefully somebody will have a conversation with you so you know that you can, that we'll be having that meeting. So there, there's really no, no motion that needs to be made on eight, so we'll move on to item number nine. Items from State's Attorney. Okay, um, and Ms. Russell, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Laura Retsel, State's Attorney. I have two pay issues before the board today. The first is a request for retroactive pay for Brayden Hodak and Emma Kalkowski-Ferrand. Um, they were promoted in the general course of business. That was during the promotion and hiring freeze, so my ask is that I be able to backpay them to the date of the original submission to the board.
Okay. That's a pretty simple request. Do we have any com, any questions from the commission?
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock, you have the floor.
So Ms. Russell, the last movement on this was twelve twenty-two twenty-four, so how many, you, you have them do, tell me how you do promotions, meaning, um, if they just got a promotion in twelve twenty-two of twenty-four, it's then now eight thirty-one twenty-five. Do they take classes? Are they doing something different where they get, um, a higher pay? Not these people in general, just, uh, how you do it in your office?
Sure, and it's the same with a public defender's office too. It's something that we do, um, in unison so that there's some fairness between our two offices, but when an attorney reaches the three-year point, there are higher expectations for that attorney, a much more difficult caseload, a required level of competence, and at the three-year mark, if they meet those requirements, both the public defender and the state's attorney promote them to what's called a senior deputy state's attorney. Really, the only other promotion opportunity within either of our offices than outside of administration would be at the seven-year mark where they would become eligible for, you'll recall, um, you let us create a new job description about eighteen months ago for what's called a major crimes, public defender and deputy state's attorney. So those are the two promotional opportunities in both of our offices.
So when you did the last movement, which on both of these was twelve twenty-two, is that when you moved them in a different position? I guess I, you said you, the three mark, three-year mark and the seven-year mark, well, last year, twelve twenty-two, you also gave them a promotion, so, um, I guess I'm not getting it.
If I could clarify that.
Okay.
On that spreadsheet, the last movement date would have been twelve twenty-two twenty-four when everyone was put on the new wage scale. That's the last pay increase they received, not specifically a promotion.
Okay.
Thank you for the assist.
Okay, I appreciate that, because I wasn't getting, it was like last movement and then it says promotion before it. The promotion is the eight thirty-one twenty-five promotion, not, not two promotions where twelve twenty-two was a promotion. It was just the new wage scale.
Yes, neither of these individuals have received a previous promotion.
That's why I was going, okay, Laura, if you said three and seven, okay.
That's a nice thing, how, having the numbers at your fingertips. Thank you, sir. Seriously, it is. I mean, you could, what?
Move to approve.
Basically, we're doing a retro, retro.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry?
She made a motion to approve. I second.
Oh, God, that's, okay. All right. When we take a break, I'm going to go like beat myself up or something, so.
I'll get you that.
I have a motion by Haddock and a second by Dur. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Did, is there anything else on here for you?
Yes, there's one more item. So this, this next item is due to a clerical error. I hired a young woman named Emily Toms. She was made an offer, which is in your confidential information packet. Um, when she was put onto the wage scale, she was put on the scale at a step lower than her offer was. So I am asking, I've fixed that since then, moving forward, but I'm asking the board to grant retroactive pay for the last month. She started on September second to compensate her for that error.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion from Haddock, second by Dur. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now you're free to go.
She's free to go?
Yep. Um, items from Treasurer, uncollectible mobile home warrants. If you don't mind just telling us what that is, I mean, I, I think I have a pretty good idea. It seems like, look, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners, and at Brant, Pennington County Treasurer. They are, um, distress warrants that go on mobile home taxes that become delinquent from the prior year. Um, by statute, they have to go to a distress warrant and the sheriff's office is the one that, um, acts on those. So delinquent taxes on mobile homes only. Real estate goes to certificate, mobile homes go to distress warrant.
Okay, just because of the difference between Chetel and, uh, real estate, okay.
Yeah.
Um, does any of the commission have any question on this? So basically you are saying these people are delinquent and, uh, you know, it looks like some of them have just disappeared, some of them have destroyed, and some of them. It's just funny because when I, I, I used to dabble into some of this business when I worked for another company and people would literally take their mobile homes and hook up their Dodge pickup trucks and drive off with their mobile home. We have to try to find them, but, so what, what happens when you have a warrant? I mean, this, there gives the, like, say if it's in a trailer park, it gives that person in the trailer park title to that property then, or is that how that works, or?
No, that would be an abandoned process. That's different. Um, it, when the sheriff's office levies on these mobile home taxes that are delinquent.
Okay.
Um, the mobile home park owner could purchase them at that sale, or they could proceed with an abandoned process. These are, um.
Oh, I see. I got, I got you. I, I've lost the last word, uncollectible. So you're saying, these are done, we gave up on them and.
We had six hundred and five of them that we turned over to the sheriff's office in March, and they have six months to, um, to collect on those. They send out their letters and try to, you know, do friendly, uh, nudging to get them to pay those, and then, um, the ones that aren't done, then they actually go out in the field and take a look and try to see what kind of shape the mobile homes in and where it's at. So these ones pursuant to ten twenty-two thirty, um, I just would respectfully, I'm presenting the forty-four mobile home warrants that were returned as uncollectible by the sheriff's office civil for your examination. My request is for the board to declare the taxes uncollectible under the grounds stated within for each one. Um, only then can they be deemed uncollectible so that they don't go back on the tax rolls for us to, um, see them again. I would also just like to take a moment to, um, um, recognize and commend the civil division of the sheriff's office who consistent, consistently go above and beyond for collection of these distress warrants. Um, Pennington County is, um, the talk of the treasurer's office roundtables when it comes to distress warrants because our sheriff does actually take, take those and, and, um, works each one. A lot, some of the counties don't do that. Um, they're bound by statute for the time that it takes to work them, no matter how long the list is. It's easy to meet expectations. It's something else entirely to exceed them with consistency, determination and excellence. Thank you for the collaboration you bring together with our office, directory of equalization, state's attorney and the efforts of, um, of you put, that each of you put into your work every day and every year on these. It matters and is appreciated, and that's to the civil division. They are wonderful.
Thank you. I'm sure that, uh, the sheriff's department appreciates your kind words to their collection efforts. So basically, we're just writing these off as uncollectible guys, so. You have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion.
You want to read the motion, um, Ms. Annette, that's a long motion.
Okay. The requested motion is, I move to declare the mobile home taxes as uncollectible in the amount of four thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents for the following twenty twenty-four distress warrants. Warrant one two oh two four, five hundred and five finance. Warrant six two oh two four, Daniel Ader. Warrant two one two zero two four, sorry, there, there's a typo on there, so twenty-one two oh two four. Dennis Alverson. Warrant five six two oh two four, Ann Batinger. Warrant six five two oh two four. Jason and Jean Blumengren. Warrant seven one two oh two four. Brian and Hazel Bradley. Warrant seventy-seven two oh two four. Kent or Brenda Brown. Warrant eighty two oh two four. Santa Bruch. Warrant ten twenty, excuse me, one oh two two oh two four, Capital Holdings. Warrant one oh three two oh two four, Capital Holdings. Warrant one oh four two oh two four, Capital Holdings. Warrant one oh five twenty twenty-four, Capital Holdings. Warrant one oh six twenty twenty-four, Capital Holdings. Warrant one oh seven twenty twenty-four, Capital Holdings. One, warrant one eleven twenty twenty-four, Carol Dele O Trust. Warrant one twenty-four twenty twenty-four. Ashley Clifford. Warrant one twenty-eight twenty twenty-four. James and Sonia Cody. Warrant one forty-nine twenty twenty-four. Richard Curry. Warrant one fifty twenty twenty-four. Jessica Zukowski. Warrant one sixty-one twenty twenty-four. Randy or Rhonda Dietrich. Warrant one eighty-three twenty twenty-four. Forrest Fanning. Warrant one eighty-four twenty twenty-four. Skylar Fasthorse. Warrant two thirty-seven twenty twenty-four. Roy Harn. Warrant two forty-five twenty twenty-four. Amanda Kay Alice Highland and Thomas Michael Spievy. Warrant two seventy-five twenty twenty-four. Ryan Jackson. Warrant two oh eight twenty twenty-four. Mitch Jeffrey. Warrant two ninety-four twenty twenty-four. Shiler Carp. Warrant three twenty-three twenty twenty-four. Michael Lebo. Warrant three seventy-seven twenty twenty-four. Julia Momarts. Warrant four ten twenty twenty-four. Larry Parks. Warrant four twenty-one twenty twenty-four. Michael Penwell and Jennifer Wingler. Warrant four sixty-six twenty twenty-four. Chance Reichman. Warrant four sixty-eight twenty twenty-four. SNS Rentals. Warrant four sixty-nine twenty twenty-four, SNS Rentals. Warrant four ninety-eight twenty twenty-four. Warren Freeman Sires Jr. Warrant five oh one twenty twenty-four. Warren Sires. Warrant five oh two twenty twenty-four. Warren Sires. Warrant five seventeen twenty twenty-four. Melody Sowles. Warrant five twenty-eight twenty twenty-four. Billy Wayne Strickland. Warrant five thirty-two twenty twenty-four. SW Investments. Warrant five forty-three twenty twenty-four. Timothy Paul Thompson. Warrant five forty-four twenty twenty-four. David Andrew or Melissa L. Threadgill. Warrant five oh five twenty twenty-four. Carl Truman. And finally, distress warrant five sixty-six twenty twenty-four in the name of Ken Walker.
So we have a, a motion from Drews? Do we have a second? And a second from Haddock and, uh, Carol, this, this motion will be written out for you here that, that's being made, so that.
I've provided that for her.
Read off for you, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Annette, and.
Thank you.
We'll move on to, uh, items from Buildings and Ground. Current county administration buildings, cab, remodel and conceptual design. Sir, you have the floor.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds. I am going to pull up this because it is mostly visual. Can I get control of you?
Well.
I already, I have it pulled up.
Yes.
So the first memo I put together, hold on, hold on here, is just to show, um, there's just been a, a lot of items that I come up here, uh, over the last, oh, six months or so, regarding sort of like the capital projects and, and how they're funded throughout the county. So I just, just want to go over a few things here. Um, the majority of what's been funded as far as the fourteen St. Joe building, the concourse building, jail design, um, and all of that is with the bond proceeds, which is roughly at thirty-three million. It, it changes monthly because, uh, we do have some large pay apps, um, that are going out, uh, for the concourse job as it is, uh, getting finalized. Um, so again, this is, uh, it's, it's mostly restricted to capital construction, renovation and remodel of county facilities. Uh, we also have the accumulated building, which I'm not sure when this was created, um, but it's kind of been a reserve fund for unforeseen special capital projects, but mainly determined by the, by the board on what we use that for. Um, you can see it has roughly three point eight million in there, and that's also, it may be a little less than that right now because we have some projects that we used. Um, this, we, 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 we use this fund to, uh, do a couple of projects that we will be receiving money back for. Uh, but we also, out of that three point eight million, we have one million set aside for the courthouse tunnel project, leaving roughly two point eight million available. It's not replenished, uh, the balance. The balance only changes if, if the commission takes any action. Then, what our department, Buildings and Grounds, calls the Capital Improvement Project Fund, which we have 1 million annually, that shouldn't have the little thing in there for, it is exactly 1 million. So, these are, it's a reoccurring annual budget allocation for our capital projects in Buildings and Grounds, infrastructure, large repairs, small-scale remodels, and other approved capital projects. We already, this was part of my budget presentation, and we've, we've already got five to six years of projects already planned and scheduled against this fund. So, it, it's typically not used for large-scale capital improvement, if you will, or large renovations. So, you can kind of see the summary down here, and another reminder, too, is that the bank building is currently under discussion, obviously with South Dakota School of Mines. If and when a transaction occurs, we will have some of those proceeds that can be reutilized for some projects as we move forward. So, it's just to give the commission an overview. And then, I put together another memo here that goes over exactly sort of what I'm requesting today, which is design fees for the remodel of this building, and I kind of want to go over a timeline because I think there's been some confusion over the last few meetings. But, again, this is specifically for this building to be remodeled, and you can see that there was a motion made. These, all three of these motions were made in July 15th unanimously approved to explore the potential sale of the bank building, and we've been working through that process. Number two is motion to explore consolidation and potential sale of the old Harley and Associated properties. That is where B&amp;G stores all of our equipment and other things like that. I have not brought that forward yet because it's not really in conjunction with the bank building, and we need to, we need to tackle this project separately if we are going to consolidate or sell those buildings because we have nowhere to move those items as of right now. So, that project will be forthcoming. And then, motion three, this is the big one, to proceed with administration, building, assessment, and remodeling plan. So, this is when I first presented the conceptual plan to the board, and it was, it was, you, you guys made a motion to proceed with me starting to look into the remodeling plan for this building. So, I've, this whole process has been going on over the last three and a half months. And then, the special budget meeting, which was just about a week ago, was when the motion was to surplus the bank building. So, that, it is now declared surplus, and we're working through that process for potential sale. So, again, my staff has followed the commission direction as far as developing these conceptual layouts for the cab remodel that I will be sharing again. We have, this will be the third time now that it's been up here. And then, the next step is to engage a design team to move from the concept into bid-ready documents so we can move forward with, with the remodel of this building, if that is a continued direction. So, and a little bit about the remodel, I'm going to go in and I'm going to show you the layout again of sort of where the departments will be configured. Just want to give a project snapshot. It's mainly consists of a phased interior reconfiguration of office areas to basically maximize the current space we have and to keep these departments in here for years to come. We're looking at estimated costs of approximately $50 per square foot. I do not have the, the, down to the, the square foot of how much space is actually being remodeled, but that's about what we're at for renovation. So, we're looking at reconfiguration of office layouts, updating finishes where appropriate in places that we touch, public corridors and primary circulation remains unchanged. There is some electrical and low voltage upgrades. The low voltage stuff is just, you know, some access control. We have to get a new fire panel in this building and all new devices for that fire panel because it is proprietary equipment that we can no longer acquire. And then, we do have some mechanical and plumbing adjustments, obviously with adding walls or taking down walls or adding a break room or things like that, and then some lighting upgrades where necessary. So, there's no structural additions, and again, the main corridors remain intact, keeping costs down. So, that is my motion, and we will come back to that.
Just a question. Have you been working with the Public Defender's Office for this change for moving them over here?
Yes.
For how long?
Roughly since July. I mean, I, I mentioned it to Eric a while back that this building could potentially be sold, and then we've started to work through the conceptual ideas of...
The last few months.
The last few months of his, yeah.
And what, how much space does he have across the street? Remember? Because you have him at 13,744.
I believe it's about 18.5.
Okay.
18.5 would be close.
So, at this point, because you put Public Defender's total square feet, 13,744, increase of 5,092.
Yep, I can pull that up. I'll, let me just go floor by floor here, and I'll revisit your question here in just a second.
That'd be good.
So, this is the floor that we are currently in right now. We are located right here. Wish that thing would stop popping up. We are located right here in the commission chamber. This is the commission office space and conference room and other things. So, there, there isn't, I don't want to say there's not a plan for this space, but this will be a multipurpose room. Departments can utilize it for large departmental meetings or potlucks or whatever they want to do, but also the state's attorney's office will be utilizing this entire space, not only the commission chambers, but some of the, the conference room and the offices and things for grand jury that they typically hold in the EOC, but this is a better utilization for them. This is the EOC, this, and this is some of their storage space. This remains pretty much untouched. This is all 911 space. Currently, if you drew a line like right here, this is pretty much where their space stops, but we're giving them a few more offices back here for their administrative staff as, as they continue to grow throughout the years. We are expanding up into this corner into their dispatch area, and then half of this space that you see down here is unfinished right now, so we just need to build out a few more offices and a conference room for them. The EOC, I touched on that, and then emergency management stays where they are. They do have an additional office for if they, if they do decide to hire another employee, which works for them long-term. Fire admin moves into the old HR space. This works really well for them. We create a, a storage for their PPE equipment, an area to rinse off their PPE equipment to get the smoke and other, you know, I guess, fumes and things that are on it, off of their equipment, as well as give them an, an additional office for future expansion. B&amp;G takes over the majority of the IT area. We do leave IT with a few offices and their server room so they can have a downtown presence, and then this is building support. So, this is all your IT, electrical, mechanical rooms, loading dock, things like that. So, that is the first floor. As we move up to second floor, this one is where there is some expansion happening. Actually, what I'm going to do is I'm going to jump up to fourth floor real quick because it's easy. Fourth floor, this is where state's attorney's currently is, so they're going to maintain this space. They are also currently right here on third floor, and then they bled over to the old Public Defender offices over here. So, essentially, what happens here is the Public Defender's move back into this space, and if you see this square right here, we gain all of this. This is in the mechanical space. All of this is the mechanical area on that third floor. We're gaining a few thousand square feet there where we're, I think we, we added an additional six offices there as well as a small conference room. So, that's really good for the Public Defender. And then, state's attorneys, now what happens is they take over where planning and zoning and equalization are on second floor, as well as a small space over here for one of their smaller departments, which works really well for them. And then, the Public Defender takes over this space here, which is the treasurer's office right now. So, where you come in down the main public corridor, this is where the, the forward-facing public counter is for the treasurer's office. We would take all that out, and we'd turn all of this into office space for the Public Defender. So, they would have a total increase. When I say increase here, I'm talking about what they had when they moved out. They had 8,000 square feet, a little over 8,000 square feet in this building, and now they're going to be at 13,700. Currently, I think they have 36 to 38 full-time employees. We're giving them space for 50-plus, which means, again, you're going to have growth in this building for years to come. Now, the other spaces here that we have in blue is what I'm just, I, I label them as vacant because this is where we are planning, this is where a lot of the remodel work will hap, I mean, it'll happen all over, but this space, too, gets quite a bit of remodel. But, the blue space is where we're looking right now to move civil and warrants from PSB and potentially records, and that's one discussion we're going to have today about if the commission would like to see the records department over here or not. So, just a reminder, civil and warrant departments are all sheriff's office. Records is RCPD, all city employees, but they all, they all work together, and they're all public-facing. So, again, this is what that vacant space is. So, the state's attorneys gets a lot of additional square footage, as well as does the Public Defender from what they had when they were in this building. And then, real quick, while we're on the topic, I'm going to hop, this is public safety building now, and all I'm showing here is, this is currently where civil and warrants are, is right here in PSB, so we're trying to free up some space in PSB. I believe these spaces here are actually the RCPD employees. There's a few additional employees that would have to move over with the records department if they were to move.
Bless you.
Bless you. So, that's where these spots are, and then if you look at third floor, or sorry, second floor of PSB, this is where the records department is right now, is all the yellow space. So, this is potentially vacated space over at PSB that allows the sheriff's office to continue to grow into this space. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. Bless you again. So, again, you know, this, these spaces work really well for a few of the departments that need to move over because they are public-facing. We can continue to utilize the, the parking lot out front for public parking. This continues, this remains a public corridor. We, we utilize these public-facing counters that we already have here for those departments, and, and I think it would work really well. There's really not a lot of other departments that could move into this vacant space just because of the size and the functionality of it, so that's why we're looking at civil and warrants, and again, potentially records. So, I will stand for any questions on this, and I also believe that the sheriff might want to say a few words about his departments if they were to move over.
Mr. Chair, question.
Yeah, I'm just going to finish.
Commissioner Hatkirk.
Over one, I appreciate that. The main thing is that they had room to grow if we're going to move them, and it sounds like you accommodated for that. I also appreciate you working with Mr. Witcher for the last few months on this issue to move him over with him in full knowing that he will have more space for the future for his people, and also that we are taking his space because I think it's, for me, it's a good idea. They're going to call it the Justice Center. It should have the Public Defender and the State's Attorney in it. I think that makes more sense than having it crossed in a bank. I also like to thank, this took a lot of work to get where you are today, and I can appreciate that. Mr. Davis, you came into this not knowing all the information and now making a solution for the county that makes it whole again for what we want to move forward on in the future. So, I appreciate everything you've done and your team, and I won't make the motion yet because I think people want to speak.
We'll have the sheriff come forward since nobody else has spoke up, so Brian, if you have some comments.
Get a minute, I had a question for Davis.
Do you want, okay. Commissioner Ross, can I ask that?
Just real quick, Brian. My only question was Eric had a concern with the Public Defender and the State's Attorney being under one roof, so just wondered how we're addressing that.
The state's attorneys and public defenders were under the same roof to begin with, with this. I think his bigger concern was with the warrant department.
Okay.
And I think the sheriff and Eric could speak about what their concerns are and, yeah, moving forward, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Can I, Sheriff Mueller, please?
Good morning, Brian Mueller, Sheriff. I appreciate the discussion, and I just really wanted to hear from the board as to what your thoughts were on the process or the likelihood of civil and warrants and/or should we include the police department records? And just a reminder, the police department records also serves all the sheriff's office. They handle all of our records needs, too. I've visited quite a bit with the chief of police and their administrative staff over the last few months on this possibility. They're open either way. If the commission feels like, like they would be a fit and we could move that, they would do that, and if not, they'd be fine staying where they are, too. So, but I just wanted to have a discussion with the commission on that. And just to speak, just really briefly to Public Defender Witcher's concerns about the warrants being close to the Public Defender's office. I, I don't have a concern of that. Obviously, we know where the Public Defender's office is now. We're not out there looking at video cameras and surveilling people coming and going from that building. We, I wouldn't, that wouldn't be a practice we have. I do realize that there may be some hesitancy on people's parts to come into that area. I think through proper messaging, I, I wouldn't have a concern. We certainly wouldn't be setting up stings at the entrance to his office, but, so, I, I know he has some concerns, but I, I don't have the same concern.
Are you okay with that move, then?
I am, yeah.
Okay.
And I, I can add a little bit of what we're, what I'm working with, with Eric and the Public Defenders here as far as their clients and how they could enter the building. We're actually looking at utilizing this entrance over here, which is the east side. This is where that small parking lot is that a lot of employees park in now off of first floor, and we're actually looking at putting like another set of, of doors in this corridor here so people can really just get to the elevator and get to B&amp;G, but they can't, can't go past this into the rest of the building outside of when there's items and stuff in the EOC. So, we're working through some of those egress things or concerns, but what that does is it allows any client for the Public Defender to come in to this elevator here, and it brings them right up to this space here, right to the Public Defender's counter. There will also most likely be another door here separating anything from Public Defenders between literally anything out here. Not saying someone from the Public Defenders couldn't use the main corridor here, but if, if they, you know, if they just tell their, their clients where to come in at and where to park, I think it would be a lot, a lot simpler. And then, also what this does, this is the only elevator that you get access to this side of third floor. So, they come in first floor, they can get up to here, or they can go up to third floor. So, really, their clients are never going to come face-to-face with the warrants department, and the warrant department is all the way up here. So, even if they came in the public corridor, we'd sign it appropriately to make sure that they take a hard right up here, and they wouldn't even come and counter with the, with the warrants division.
I think Mr. Witcher's in the office, so if he has a concern or wants to make a comment about that, because I know he had brought that up earlier, so, and I'm assuming that you've visited with Mr. Davis about that.
Good morning, Eric Witcher, Public Defender, and I appreciate the sheriff's comments, and I, I fully expect that that would be the case, that they, they wouldn't be patrolling. This is, and I have worked with Davis as well of trying to, this is about risk mitigation, basically. So, there is no, there is no set, you know, policy by anybody that you cannot have a warrants department or state's attorney's office or whatever entity and a Public Defender's office within the same move. So, the, the question is, is a, is a client of the Public Defender's office going to be reluctant to go see their lawyer because of the other entities nearby? So, that's why we're, we're working on a separate entrance to mitigate this risk, but I, I, that's all it is, is a, is a risk mitigation. How these would come up, it's not the sheriff's going to be doing something. It would be a, a client of the Public Defenders who later says, you know what, there's this Justice Center, it's all law and for, I got to go by evidence, and the warrant is right there. I felt like I couldn't go see my lawyer and a federal judge saying, I agree with you, and now you got to move him out. That's, this is what we're trying to mitigate. This is the risk. So, it's not going to come from my office. It's going to come from the sheriff's. This is going to be somebody down the road who, and they may be successful in that lawsuit or they may not. That's, none of us really know, and that's why someone could have done this when we were here before.
Right.
Because, yeah, the state's attorney's office, but it was designed by the previous commissioners and, and, and architects, et cetera, to try to mitigate that risk as much as possible. and, and, and architects, et cetera, to try to mitigate that risk as much as possible. So, it, this is what we're, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, it does answer my question.
We're working as, I think, if this commission decides, yes, this is what we're gonna do, then we're gonna try to mitigate that risk as much as we can, but it's still, it's, there is a risk, and you should be aware of it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Witcher? No? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yeah. Lastly, if I could just add something real quick. The design, so I've been working since July with Co-op on, on the design so far, and, and we're at a place now, which is why I'm up here, we need to, we need to continue to move forward, we need to get these into design development plans and then construction documents and move forward. This process has not been rushed, we have tried to time it with the concourse move. We are, we're a little behind that schedule right now. If we were to move forward with this, once we get everything finalized, it'll probably be December when we bid it out, but it's still a good timeframe. I've spoken with a few contractors that are GCs that are heavily interested in this, so I do believe we'll get a lot of competitive bidding on this as well and be able to start tackling it right away, so.
Chair.
Commissioner Hatcock.
Remove to authorize day per cell buildings and grounds director to execute the necessary contract documents, including but not limited to an AIA amendment with CO, with Co-op Architecture for Design Services related to current county administration building cab remodel in amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand utilizing existing bond funds.
A motion? A second? I'll, I'll second the motion. A motion from Hatcock, second by wife and bot. Any questions on the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Drew, you have the floor.
So, Davis, my question is going to be, so the design work is going to be contingent upon, I mean, in what you've proposed here anyway, so a couple of things have to happen. So, the FIB property that we have surplus, you know, we would have to follow through, obviously, with the sale on that property, and so the sale of that property is contingent upon implementing this design work, correct?
I wouldn't, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that the sale of that building should be, should be the decider on whether we renovate this building or not. I think, I think if the commission direction is to sell that building, we need to renovate this building. If we get a buyer that wants to buy it and they wanna move in and we have no plan to move forward to move out of it, then we're stuck there for another year. What this does is it allows us to go through this process to get the design done, renovate the building, move into the building, and then turn that building over to the buyer, the, the bank building. I just wouldn't say it's, it's a contingency factor that we have to sell that building before we remodel this building. The commission has already gave the direction to move forward with, well, we've gotten to the point where we've, we've, we've declared it as surplus, and we are working with a potential buyer, and that buyer is very aggressive, I've talked to them lately, so I think a sale will happen depending on whether the commission wants to go out to the public and list it, you know, and, and take public bids for it. That's another option we have if the commission so chooses to go that route, but we will be, we will be way behind the ball if we do not move forward with this, because at the end of the day, the conceptual plan that I have provided for you, it just shows that we, we don't need that building right now, and we probably won't need it for another fifteen to twenty years if we do this right. So, we can move out of that building regardless of if it's sold immediately.
All right. And then my second question's going to be, so take away surpassing the FIB property and saying that that is not, the sale of that property is not contingent upon the design work that we would do a remodel in this building. And then my question is going to be, were any of those expenses for the design work and the remodel of this building put in anybody's budget for fiscal year twenty-six?
Uh, no, but this, the plan that was adopted was to remodel this building for it to be, basically become the new public safety building, which was estimated at eighteen million dollars for that renovation. It was picking up everyone from PSB and moving them into this building essentially. Now that that's not happening, the, sort of the new concept is to sell the bank building, remodel this building, and that's kind of, I mean, yeah, that's where we're at, but I don't, there wasn't, the majority of projects, like I said, as far as concourse, the jail design, and fourteen St. Joe, when we purchased it and did some, some light remodel in there, was all paid through, through the, through the bond proceeds. So, that's where a lot of the funding has come from for these large-scale renovations and remodels, so we don't necessarily budget for that. Sometimes we can predict what we might spend out of it, but I can tell you this building was in the long-term plan, but we've obviously reduced the price of what it's gonna cost significantly by doing what we're doing here with just this remodel instead of, instead of remodeling it completely, so.
Okay. So, my comment related to that is, I think what I'm hearing is, and I maybe heard it a week ago, is that we're looking at the bond money is really not part of the county budget, and it is a revenue stream in the budget, but what I'm saying, when you go to, let's just say this is a three-million-dollar remodel, and so the bills have to get paid, and so to pay the bills, I'm assuming out of your budget?
For this remodel?
Yeah.
No. No, this entire remodel would be paid for through either the bond proceeds and depending upon, it would most likely come out of the bond proceeds, and then when we sell the bank building, however we wanna reutilize those funds.
Correct.
Could sort of replenish that, that's sort of the concept here, but no, it would not, our, we, we could not afford. That was sort of why I put that first memo together of our capital improvement project fund of one million a year. We don't account for large-scale remodels like this because it would eat our budget immediately, and it would, it would surpass the budget that we have, so.
So, Mr. Chair, I've got a question for Jordan, then.
Commissioner Drew.
So, again, going when we're building a budget and we're talking, let's just say in this case, you know, we're talking about a three-million-dollar expenditure, and that expenditure is not captured in the twenty-twenty-six budget, correct?
Correct.
So, how, knowing that it comes out, if we're gonna pull it out of bond funds, how would you propose that that budget would be put together?
Budget for it, for expenditures, and we do have line items that they do bill these through as expenditures that are created essentially as the projects come up, and so if we knew the project was coming up, we would set a budget to that line item, to that, it, it's a totally different budget, totally new from everything else, knowing that it gets supplemented after we know that the expenses came through, and so the budget gets added into that, but we don't budget for it upfront, so it's, oh, thank you. So, it's underrepresenting what the actual expenditures expected for the year would be.
And so, and what we could, I mean, if, if, yeah, and if, what we could do is get through this process, I could bring up the design development plans to the commission, so we don't move forward with construction documents until you guys have signed off on design development, and then we'll move forward with construction documents, and then when we go out to bid, I'll, I obviously have to bring those bids back for you guys to award the project, and at that point, you'll have a hard number of what the project cost will be if we accept a bid, and then we can budget around that and, and put that into our budget for next year. So, 'cause I don't, what I don't wanna do is just say, well, let's throw three million dollars in there right now, because that's my estimation, it's Co-op's estimation, but we need to, we need to see what the bids come back at too, so.
Yeah, so, Chairman. Commissioner Drews.
So, my concern is continuing to siphon off bond dollars for these other projects, 'cause we have, we know that we have approximately thirty-three million in bond dollars left. We also know that the estimate on doing the infrastructure at the jail was somewhere around that thirty-two, thirty-three million dollars, and so anytime that we deplete that, and if we do run into an emergency at the, at the jail of needing to do that fix in the immediate future rather than putting it off three or four years, the dollars are not gonna be there to pay for it.
Yep, and I can respond to that a little bit. The infrastructure itself is less than thirty million dollars. The, 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 the cost estimations that we got back were for infrastructure and remodel. If the commission, when we talk about the jail project, if the commission's direction is to just fix infrastructure, we will not hit that thirty million dollars. When we looked at the thirty-five million or so that we received for the costs from Skull, that was infrastructure and remodel, it was pretty much gutting an entire ground-level floor, remodeling all the space, and then coming up to level one and doing some remodel there. So, I don't, I mean, I could throw a number out to say, you know, infrastructure might be fifteen to twenty million of that total, but what this still does is even with this project, it still aligns us really well with having thirty million dollars for the jail project if that was to move through, because depending how the commission votes, that thirty million dollars, you know, we, i- if we were to build the new jail tower, that our bond money would stay at thirty million or a little bit more until, you know, three or four years down the road until the new tower is built, and then that infrastructure would get fixed. So, you know, we're, this aligns well with, with what we're budgeting for the jail project regardless of what the commission decides, so.
Chair.
Commissioner Drews, is that it?
I, I just wanted to respond and say, that's a dollar figure I'd never heard before. It's always, it's always been thirty-two, thirty-three million dollars talking about the infrastructure. I've never heard about these other dollars that they're talking about as far as doing remodeling at the same time with that.
Yeah, so the venture proposal that we presented during the presentation says infrastructure and remodel, there's always been an and remodel. What's happened is our vocabulary has just shrunk it down to infrastructure, 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 and that's what we've been saying, but could you consider remodel as infrastructure? A little bit, 'cause I'm not saying those, those areas don't need to remodel in the jail, but if we don't build a new tower, if we don't build additional bed space or capacity, we won't be able to, to do that remodel because we won't have the space for the employees or for anyone to move to be able to do that, but if the commission's decision is not to move forward with a jail tower and just fix the infrastructure, we won't, we won't hit that thirty million dollars because it does not include the remodel aspect of it as well.
Does that answer the question? I, I can honestly say that I thought the, the infrastructure was twenty million in the discussions, I heard the twenty million for the infrastructure, but.
Chair, chair.
Commissioner Hatcock.
It was twenty-eight million for the infrastructure, and then we just kept adding remodel and some other stuff, so it did start at twenty-eight million, I have a paper that says that. I also know that the, the bank money was bond money, and that would be returning, and that makes sense, is to do the remodel here, and I do know that it was gonna be eighteen million to do the, this remodel in the current building we're in right now. Number one, where were you gonna get the eighteen million from? So, you already spent the five-whatever million to do the bank and the parking lot, where was the eighteen million coming from? I never got that with remodeling this building. So, I'll just tell you, the whole thing didn't make sense from the numbers from the beginning when you only had twenty-eight million, and when we started this whole discussion, it was fifty-seven million with all the projects we had to do. So, the eighteen million was never included in on that. So, if we're talking bond money, how are you gonna move over there to the new one, keep the bank, and remodel this building with what money? So, if we're talking about what we were thinking with the bonding, what were you thinking at the time when people, when you guys were buying a bank and, and doing other things when we, we were, I'll just be up straight, eighteen million dollars, nine million, nine million, that was supposed to come from the city. So, where was the other nine million on our part? Let's just say, 'cause it wouldn't have been eighteen, it'd only been nine. We're gonna sell a building, which makes sense, we're gonna get, recapture that money, we're gonna remodel this and put this building to make it whole again, and you're gonna use the same money that you were gonna use to buy a bank that wasn't needed at the time, so that was bond money. So, I'm understanding from Mr. Davis, and that's why I'm on board with this, that was kind of the plan in the first place, was to keep the cap or this building and not have extra buildings at the time. So, Mr. Davis, you did some miracles here in what you're doing. You came in on the backside. Mr. Davis, if anybody knows, wasn't here. I've been here for eleven years, and these plans really changed a lot in the last three or four years. So, now Mr. Davis is trying to make it whole, make it make sense to the taxpayer and do due diligence to this county, and I think what he's doing is, is doing well. You're gonna use, I'm a business person, you're gonna use the same money and have some actually to use for other remodels from bond money that was already used, so, and he's taken this building that would've cost eighteen million, and he's taken it into about two-point-five, three million dollars. That makes, that's a good business plan. So, that's why I'm on board with this, I think Mr. Davis has got it down straight about what needs to happen and what is best for our taxpayers' dollars at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So, Davis, let's talk about the CIP fund. Right now, that's set at a million annually, when did that go into effect?
It's been there. It was eight-hundred thousand for, I don't know how many years before I got here, and last year, we had it increased to a million. So, and those, those are some of the projects that I've spoken about during budget hearings. I also, you know, I requested an additional five-hundred thousand because we have one chiller that will cost us five to six-hundred thousand dollars alone. We have roof projects that could be anywhere from three-hundred thousand to eight-hundred thousand. We have parking lot repairs, we have, I mean, all sorts of, of needs here and there that have to happen, and that's what those CIP funds are used for.
I just wondered if there's a process to, for that amount to increase to reflect inflation?
Yeah, and I, I did, I did increase it last year, so this is the first year, actually, twenty-twenty-five was the first year we had a million. So far, so good, we're able to catch up on some projects, but we're gonna see how the next few years shake out, 'cause there, there are some high, high-dollar projects that we need to look for, and I'm hoping not to ask the commission for any sort of supplement, we're gonna try to work those out over the next few years, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor, so.
Your chair?
Yes.
I just have a follow-up.
Commissioner Drew.
Good. So, my comment related to this is just gonna be getting back to a budget discussion, and so when we have projects that we anticipate that are, we're gonna be expending, you know, county funds irrespective of where the revenue is coming from, that these need to be, you know, part of a budget discussion to have that opportunity, because, you know, the county has historically, you know, passed a county budget and then supplemented that budget to the tune of millions of dollars, and so we just passed a budget that would say, we're gonna have roughly a hundred-and-twenty-eight million dollars in expenditures for twenty-twenty-six, and now we're talking about, you know, bumping that up without part of a budget discussion and saying that it's gonna be, you know, a hundred-and-thirty million, a hundred-and-thirty-one million. And so when these projects come up, it's something that we need to get to, that we are actually having this discussion as part of a budget discussion and not looking at where the revenue is coming from, because I've heard the same thing about restricted funds. It's not relevant because it's coming from restricted funds, it's not relevant that it's a highway fund. I don't really care where the source comes from, it is a budget discussion because it is an expenditure, and we are levying those dollars against the taxpayers, and so I'm going to support this motion for the design work, but I don't want to, to get an idea to what that looks like, because this is almost the same discussion, getting back to seven million dollars in design work for a jail when we don't have a plan and a project. And so, some of this is going to be contingent upon what happens with the property across the street. So, I'll support this motion, but when it comes down to the actual getting a number and moving toward construction, I'm gonna have input as to whether or not that's twenty-six or twenty-seven.
A motion on the second on the floor? Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I can't support the motion as it is. I'll be voting no.
Okay, and I guess you don't have to explain why, but it would be nice to know if there's something we can change now or, or just.
Well, I think he spoke to his concerns.
Okay, fine. I guess, okay, let's do, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, one nay, is that correct, from Commissioner Drews? Karen, did you get that?
I did, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could we take like a five-minute break?
Yeah, that'd be perfect. I think I need one, so. Typically, we have a ten-thirty timeframe. We kind of went over that, so we're gonna skip a couple of agenda items and hit right to that for the people that showed up and had to pursue through our breaks, so.
We're going right to planning?
Yeah, Planning Board of Adjustments, Karen. So we're gonna, we're gonna put the other two on hold. Item twelve and thirteen will be on hold until we finish the Planning Board of Adjustments. So I guess we will look for a motion to convene as the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
We have a motion from Ross Connect and a second by Dur to convene as the Board of Adjustments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and so we will move on to item fourteen A, and thank you, Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Hand, Planning Director. Item fourteen A is variance COVA twenty-five dash zero-zero-one-four for Christian Harding to allow more than forty dwelling units on a dead-end road system, and the applicant has requested to continue this item to the October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting. So moved.
Second. We have a motion from Haddock, second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to item fourteen B. Thank you, Jason.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. General item fourteen B is a reconsideration of subdivision regulations variance COSV twenty-five dash zero-zero-three to allow more than forty lots on a dead-end road system. The applicant is Kristen Bennett, operating under Haven Homes LLC, and she is on Zoom if you have any questions for her. Location of the property is two-two-six-one-one Hazel Lane, currently zoned, planned unit development district. As of that report that you're reconsidering now, it is now ranchette. Access is off Hazel Lane, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Jordan, can I get my presentation up on the screen, please?
Thank you, Jason.
So, I'll finish, sir. If good. Staff does consider two criteria in basing their recommendations. I'll get that up on the screen. First criteria is to determine whether granting a variance runs counter to public interest. And as you can see from the responses on the screen, staff determined that there, that the answer to that question is yes. The second criteria is to determine whether special conditions exist on, that would grant, sorry, whether special conditions exist to grant a variance. As you can see on the screen as well, staff found that there is not. The request was originally sent out for interapartmental review. Loveland Road District did provide objections, and that objection was contained in the original staff report. No other objections or concerns were received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is proposing to subdivide the property and create two lots, one additional lot on this dead-end road system. On August fifth of this year, the Board approved a comprehensive plan amendment, a rezone, and a major planned unit development, but denied this request. So again, staff's recommendation is denial of subdivision regulations variance COSV twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-three, as there are no special conditions on the subject property that would support approval. However, if the Board of Adjustment does disagree, staff approve, or staff recommends that one condition be included. With that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Drews, you have a question, sir?
So the, the condition that you're recommending to be included involves the fire mitigation plan.
Correct.
Correct. So who's the onus put on if that's approved?
That would be on the property owner to work with county fire to come up with a mitigation plan.
Okay. As it read, you know, it says, prior to final plan application, a fire mitigation plan for the proposed subdivision be provided in accordance. So it's not the entire subdivision, it's strictly the platted, the newly platted areas.
Correct, it would be her proposed subdivision.
She is on Zoom, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Ross Connect.
So remind me, Jason, in that general area, did we not approve something similar in the last couple of months?
Yes, this property here, just to the lower left of this property, this was the Merchant that you, the Board of Adjustment, did approve that variance for them.
I don't know. To me, we kind of set a precedence when we did that, so something I have to consider.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, so getting back to that, because I think what happened when we looked at the, we had made a decision on the Bennett property, and then when we had the Merchant property discussion, it came up that even though there is a forty residential limit, is that?
Correct.
Okay. But all the properties in there that are grandfathered prior to that change, they could build irrespective of that forty residential limit.
Right. I believe as of this report, I counted a total of forty-two lots on that dead-end road system, ten of which were not developed or vacant. But as staff and as the, as applying the zoning ordinance to this, we have to count those as being developed because they have a property right to develop those. So that's how I come up with the forty-two lots on this dead-end road system and how the zoning ordinance is applied. That answer your question?
Yeah, it was just information we didn't know at the time we heard this, that we could exceed that residential limit because of those individuals that were grandfathered in advance. That's what we were told.
I don't believe that, I don't believe that's how the zoning ordinance is applied in this case. It should be applied that we treat those lots, whether vacant or developed, as developed because there is a potential for those all to be developed and have residences on them.
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock.
So why I'm saying this is, I'll say it like I did the first time. We had to go back and on the change of the forty-unit rule because of health, welfare, and safety, if they could prove that that would happen over the forty-unit rule, that we could move forward with it because there was a lot of areas that were passing and surpassing the forty-unit rule. Plus, the rule was done so long ago, even the city didn't know why they ended up making a forty-unit rule. The only reason I would pass this and pass the last one was I believe people can have fire mitigation, they can have a secondary road to get out in that area. And also, when I usually vote against a forty-unit rule, it's in a canyon with one way in, one way out, where people, if, in these areas, I believe, can get out. So for me, seeing this, that's why I had voted over the forty-lot unit, and we have done this, not just this time, we have done this many times in Pennington County, when we figured out that there was areas that if they had fire mitigation and rules and regs that for health, welfare, and safety, that we could move forward on it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
So the forty residential home rule or whatever, I think, you know, that number was to address safety concerns, and I think the, the one condition that prior to final plan application, that there be a fire mitigation plan in place, which kind of litigates the forty-acre, or the forty, the home rule in my opinion, it's, it's all about safety, and if there's a plan in there that provides some kind of a mechanism for safety, I guess, I don't have a problem with it.
So Jason, so when you, when you talk about variances and you talk about rules and ordinances, and variances are voted on by the county commission under all the circumstances that prevail, correct?
Correct.
So, and variances been, for forty acres have happened in the past, as long as they are, you know, so it doesn't cause a health, safety concern?
Yes, I believe that the variances are all considered on an individual case-by-case basis.
What's the, what's the, you know what the square area or the density is of these properties are?
The lot sizes vary. You can see on the screen, they're.
What would be the smallest lot size and what would be the biggest?
About three and a half acres, I think, is some of the smallest.
How much?
Three and a half acres.
Three and a half acres is smallest, okay.
And she's proposing to subdivide into two five-acre lots.
Right, right, okay. Now, I have some speaker requests for them, and I think somebody wanted to talk as a group, if I'm not mistaken, but I have Lori, Lori Beckvar?
Yeah, and Diane Altman is joining me.
Okay, you want to just talk together? Is that what you wanted to do?
Yeah.
Because you want to just, okay, so you're gonna have three minutes if one of you talks or, so, both of you are gonna talk or just?
I'll, I'll talk first.
Okay, perfect, then go ahead.
So our names are Lori Beckvar and Diane Altman, and we're representing a group of sixteen neighbors who live in the Merchant area and use the dead-end road that's called Merchant Road to get in and out of this area, and it is the only way to get in and out of that area. So we, the sixteen neighbors, recently filed an appeal to the Seventh Judicial Court on the Board Commissioners' decision of August nineteenth approving the variances to allow Connie and Dave Merchant to split their lot. And that was COSV twenty-five, zero-zero-four, zero-zero-five, and zero-zero-one-three were those variances. So we're opposed to Haven Homes for the very same reasons stated in our appeal. And to summarize, and I won't go into all of them because they are in the appeal, there are already forty-two lots approved to build homes for this dead-end road system above the forty limit in the zoning ordinance, and adding to this capacity by looking at, only at the currently built homes, which was the conversation of the Commissioners on August nineteenth, really compromises the intent of the people who own buildable lots there already. So it was almost like instituting some kind of a race to build because once you got to forty-two, it would stop, and it was focused on how many homes are currently built, and as Jason just said, lot, buildable lots and the homes that are built are connected. So the people who own these lots, Mike and I are one of them, Mike Beckvar and I, Diane and Byron also have capacity like that. You know, we're presuming that we can build on these lots in the future without issue, but that may not be the case if this, this race to build to get to forty-two is on. So the second reason is the, the variance criteria were not met. The third reason was that the Commissioners voted against their own department's recommendation. The fourth reason, there are fire, flood, sewer, and water concerns going above forty, and all of the many reasons are included in the formal appeal again, so we won't go into each one. The bottom line is we are opposed to adding any more buildable lots to this Merchant area, and that restriction is supported by your own zoning ordinance. So thank you very much for hearing me out. Diane?
I guess the one thing I want to add is just to be sure, there is only one way in and out, and that's a substandard county road, a blind curve. It's, it's one way in and out. Also, the original reason for Haven Homes' request was because there's, there is a house on that ten acres. They wanted to divide it because she had a buyer who couldn't afford everything. Well, that person is gone now, so I don't know what her reason now is to, for dividing. It's just, I'm just here to support her. Like I said, remind you, we do have an appeal that was, I believe Ms. Haddock signed it. We haven't heard back from the Seventh Circuit Court, what, what, where we go from here, but we're opposed to you approving this, and ask that you at least put it, postpone it until that appeal is heard.
Okay. So Jason, in regards to one of the concerns, if they've already got a buildable lot, they're okay to build in the future, they won't have to come and get a variance?
Correct.
Right.
Do you understand that, ladies?
Well, that's right.
If you had a buildable lot now.
But the, the rule, well, on the forty-unit dead-end road, some of us who built there knew that rule.
Right, and I'm, I'm just, I just wanted to ask you one simple question, because it was, the comment was made that it was a bill, it was a race to build the houses.
Oh, they were grandfathered?
Yeah, anything that's there now is getting built, can get built, okay? So let's get that off the table.
But you're still, but you're still building capacity.
Pardon?
But capacity is still being added by approving these decisions.
I mean, Amber, I mean, if you have thirty houses now and you build twelve, you're gonna have forty-two. If you build fifteen, you're gonna have, you know.
Yeah, so we're going, so we're going over forty-two.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure we understood that part of it. Now.
We'll have to talk to our attorney. I'm not sure he was quite clear on that, but I'm gonna.
We're telling you from our perspective, and your attorney can.
Yeah.
Wait, and Walter, can I bring you forward real quick? Since some of this property is in litigation, I would like to have a conversation regarding litigation in executive session. Is that appropriate at this time?
Pink County Risk Manager, Walter Macduff, Chair, yes. If we're gonna be talking litigation, we can't talk that in the public.
Right, I don't want to get involved in that, so I would like to make, have a motion to go into executive session.
Are the ladies done speaking?
Pardon?
Are the ladies done?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Are you done speaking?
Yeah, okay.
So if we can get a motion to go into executive session and have a conversation.
I just got one question, and maybe Jason can answer it. The forty-unit rule, is that a policy? It is a guideline, or is that a resolution that?
It's in the zoning ordinance. It is a requirement. It's also in our subdivision regulations.
Okay, just want to.
Okay.
Have an understanding.
One other question for Jason.
Okay.
So on the forty-unit rule, why did we end up having to change some of the, because of emergency services, meaning on fire, flood, or, what's the other one? I can't remember.
Yeah, as it was written originally, there were, if the Board granted a variance, there were no mitigating measures to go along with the variance. So we wanted to add something in there in the event that a variance did get approved, that there would at least be something like the fire mitigation plan that has to be approved by the county fire administrator to go along with it.
So what was the reasoning, by the way, because the city couldn't tell me, why we did a forty-unit rule?
That, I don't know. That was before my time. I haven't been able to dig that up either. Vicky Fisher wasn't able to provide that information either from the city, and she's got a lot of historical knowledge in the county and the city, and she couldn't give us the rationale behind that number.
And being at the city as well. So a lot of times, we felt like that it was, when we made those rules, and I was at the city before the county, it was almost like we were doing a taking on people's property if we didn't let them build unless there is a huge safety factor. So for me, again, that's why, unless there's a huge safety factor for people in the area, to say you can't get out is different than you're in a canyon and you're really, there's only one way in, one way out. Just because you have one road doesn't mean you can't get out, for me. So there's gravel roads, there's other roads in that area that people can, so.
So we have a motion on the floor to go into executive session, so.
Beck.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same thing. We'll, we'll reconvene here. Yes, one, two, okay, there we go. Okay, so looking for a motion to come on of executive session.
Second.
We have a motion from Haddock and a second by Drews to come on of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and we'll move on to a motion on fourteen B. Does anybody have a motion for fourteen B? Reconsideration of subdivision regulation variance. We have someone on Zoom. Did they want to speak, or did they? Or how about we make a motion and let them speak then, I guess?
Yeah, Kristen Bennett here. I, I would like to clarify that with the purchase of this property years ago, it has always been my intent to renovate the log barn and stop its disintegration, and that didn't change whether I was gonna sell the property or not. The buyers had to move to Hill City because of the first decision, and so that deal is off the table. But when the first three pieces were approved, I did lose the right to essentially make that log barn into a guest house. And so I did end up with even fewer property rights than I had to begin with, and I think it was Commissioner Haddock that had mentioned that. So, you know, if, if I can't split the lot, if I can at least go back to being able to renovate the barn into a thousand-square-foot tiny house, that would be fine. But I'm happy to answer questions too, if needed.
Thank you. So do we have a motion, Jordan? Somebody have that motion? Yep, Commissioner Haddock.
I'm gonna motion to approve. Based on our forty-lot unit, we ended up giving it one condition with that.
with that final application of fire mitigation plan for the proposed subdivision. You provided in accordance with fourteen hundred.
A motion, do we have a second?
Sir.
I have a motion from Hadcock, second by Drews, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries, and we'll.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Just part of the discussion, I think the reason the Board reconsidered this and looking at it is because we're even questioning the forty uh, rule and how we got to that point. But um, the proximity of this property to Norris Peak Road and some of the, even though it is one way in and one way out, but uh, you know, kind of the change in fire response and some of those as to why uh, I think we're gonna, you know, considered obviously approving this was because we think the mitigation efforts, the main concern about health, safety, and welfare are somewhat mitigated by the fire response plan, fire mitigation plan, and the proximity to a major uh, trafficked areas, so.
Thank you. So, item fourteen C, subdivision regulations variance, Shriner Investments, um, now, is this the one that they recommend, that they were wanting to continue?
Um, yes, because the applicant and the agent could not be present.
Okay.
Um, so they are requesting that this item be continued to the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioner meeting, but I do know that there are individuals here that would like to speak on this item.
Yeah, I have three speaker request forms for item fourteen C.
I'll still go ahead and make the motion to continue until the next meeting.
Second.
Now, we're discussing.
So, we have a motion and a, and a second to continue the items. Um, but uh, I'd like to give the um, people here an opportunity to speak on this item. Um, and I'll call all the subdivision regulations. Joe Dapper, are you here, Joe?
Yes, sir.
You want to come forward and identify yourself?
My name is Joe Dappin', and I live on Reno Gulch Road. Um, the proposal to uh, to waive the road improvements, um, I'm opposed to that on account of it, that's a very narrow section of the road, and it's a safety hazard to not do any improvements if they're gonna continue on with their uh, desire to uh, make that a commercial property. And uh, I think just on the count of safety, and, and I know that the, the, the county road engineers suggested that that be improved for a more of a, a commercial and a more safer approach. And so, I'm just here to say that I think it should be, if, if, if the whole thing goes through as he wants, it should be um, as the county engineers wanted to improve it, it should be improved. That's all I have.
Is that all you have, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Rod Lindstrom, Rod, are you here?
Good morning, Rod Lindstrom, Reno Gulch resident. I'm gonna read this to you. I would like to voice my opposition to the variance request for the approach onto Reno Gulch Road. The Painton County Highway Approach Policy is written to ensure safety for all parties using the public road. This includes those entering the road. The current location has a significant blind spot looking up Reno Gulch that hinders those traveling the public road from seeing anyone pulling out and vice versa. According to the Highway Department's Interactive Traffic Counts map, that section of Reno Gulch has an average traffic count of two hundred and forty-five vehicles per day. Having a blind approach entering a road with that significant amount of traffic causes a serious hazard for all involved. All property owners in Painton County are required to meet the standards put forth by the Highway Department policy. I do not believe a variance should be allowed for this one individual based on convenience or financial ease, especially when the intent is to have commercial property with significant traffic entering the public roadway. And just to add to that, the traffic count was done in September, and uh, instead of July because of uh, fiber optic construction on the road. So, two hundred and forty-five is low compared to the U T V traffic on there would be more like five hundred in my estimate, so. Thank you, thank you.
And then we have Rod Schaefer.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Rod Schaefer, longtime Reno Gulch resident. Family's been there about eighty years. In this spot in question that they're talking about, Reno Gulch Road, there's about three hazardous places, and this is one of them right here. When you turn off the highway, this section of the road is the narrowest piece, and there's about a twenty-foot drop-off on the east side. And the pavement's roughly twenty-foot wide right there. And there's a hill, that where this approach is coming out right now, you know, there's no traffic coming in and out of there during the day except maybe one or two. Office going to Sunny Shop right there, so this hasn't been a problem. I drive, I got a shop up there, and I drive a Peterbilt truck with a fifty-three-foot trailer, so I'm seventy-five feet long. When I come down Reno Gulch Road, on that piece of property right there, I'm, when I meet traffic, I'm right on the edge, I'm on the drop-off side. I go over as far as I can, give everybody as much room as I can, but there is barely room to meet a car right there. And now they're talking about making an approach right there with traffic. This will be a totally hazardous situation. And there's no feasible way you can make this work and be safe. And when I come off the Highway sixteen going south, there's an S curve right there when you come off onto Reno Gulch Road, it's plenty wide right there. But I go from the ditch on my driver's side, my trailer's in the ditch on the other side. And people that live on Reno Gulch know that when they meet me, they gotta stop or pull off in the ditch because we can't meet. Somebody has to back up. The people that don't live there don't know that, so I always stop and try to make them understand what's happening. I mean, I'm, I'm not on their side of the road on purpose, but my trailer is. And then, when they figure it out, then we, we, we make it work. But people that don't live there don't understand.
Chair.
And this is a serious.
Let him finish.
Very serious situation if we have traffic coming out of the side road right there. It'd be unimaginable. Thank you very much for hearing my story.
Thank you, Rod, I'm not sure Commissioner Hadcock has a question for you, or?
Rod, no, I, I agree, anytime you have highway service or a commercial, it's just my opinion that those approaches need to be commercialized or for highway service. That's just my opinion, I know we continue this, sir, but um, that's just my opinion on this issue just because of the difference of what's gonna go in and out.
This driveway right there is right on the crest of that hill, you can't see.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's a bad, bad, bad spot.
Yes, sir.
Without any traffic.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I'm Commissioner Ross.
We're gonna put a map up there, so.
Yeah, I got questions now that are going through my head, and it's just, basically, this guy already owns this property, and he's already using it for the purposes intended. So, what's changing, I guess, is what I need to get my arms around.
Yeah, I just thought uh, we could, Brittany, can you put a rapid map up there, the? Show us exactly that area that Rod's talking about. And the properties currently zoned highway service, is that correct?
So, there's two properties in question, there's two lots in question, and they're subdividing. Um, nine acres of it is already zoned commercial, one point three acres of it is ag and suburban residential. Uh, this, the request is to rezone that one point three acres to commercial. Um, so this property right here that contains this building right here, there's nine acres. This lot right here is actually um, already zoned commercial. Um, it does have access off of Reno Gulch, but it also has an approach off of Highway three eighty-five. Um, there is the small parcel that's uh, one point three acres, that's going to be these two lots right here that'll be together, that does have an approach um, that would be off Reno Gulch Road, and I have spoke to the Highway Department and to the applicant's agent. And at the time of building permit submittal, they will have to upgrade that approach to commercial standards.
So, we're talking about something that, uh, maybe they weren't aware of, that if this does get upgraded, they'll have to upgrade the approach?
Correct, at the building permit submittal, because they'll have to submit an approach permit um, with their building permit application.
Does that make sense to you, Rod?
Yeah, I guess it does, I didn't know that.
What's the variance for?
Yeah, I didn't know.
The variance is to allow this property to be zoned commercial because Reno Gulch Road doesn't meet commercial road standards. So, Reno Gulch Road right now, this lot, this lot, this lot, and these lots are all commercial, but they do take access off of three eighty-five. This one point three acre section would be the only one that would take access off Reno Gulch.
So, it's, so Rod, what they're telling you is that they're looking for a rezone to commercial, and that commercial, and, and guys, that it will have to be a commercial approach.
The approach would have to be. And if you, if the variance is approved, then they would not have to build this road to commercial standards. This Reno Gulch, this portion right here. The only lot that will ha, take access off Reno Gulch is this one point three acres. This does right now, but if they do commercial development on it, we're going to request that the access be taken off three eighty-five.
Yes.
Okay, so actually, if this got zoned commercial, it'd help Rod's problem?
So, this, all of these lots, so.
That's already zoned commercial, right?
If you see all of these lots are already zoned commercial or highway service, it's just this small portion, this one point three acres.
But I mean, if you, I guess the point I'm getting to is because Rod was saying that, that, that approach is undersized.
Mm-hmm.
And if he, if he did get it, if we did get the variance and he did, because if we don't get the variance, he's probably not gonna do anything.
Then he won't be able to rezone this to commercial, and he'd have to rezone it to another district or residential district. Then the approach would stay a residential approach, and that would be up to the Highway Department. They would still have to build and get an approach permit before the building permit, regardless. Yet, the approach just has to be built for the use that would be on the property.
Which would be commercial.
But I have a que, how come if, if that's already zoned commercial, the big piece, how come they can't go through the, how come they don't go to the, what's already zoned commercial and onto three eighty-five?
Well, right now, what's in question is this parcel right here.
Yes.
That they're combining, has three different zoning districts on it right now.
They want to zone that all commercial. They could still come in on three eighty-five.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
For this one.
But right now, the problem is that approach, if it's undersized right now, if they zone it commercial, then they have to upgrade it to a larger.
Yes.
If they don't, if they, if they get denied, they do nothing to that approach, and it stays the way it is.
But then they can still access through the commercial property to three eighty-five.
Right.
So.
They own all that.
Right, this property right here does have an approach, but this is not a commercial approach. They have a conditional use permit to have that storage building there. If they did put a commercial use on this property, Highway Department and our office would require them to utilize a commercial approach off three eighty-five.
Right.
Okay, just so you guys have that understanding.
Is your name Rod, too, you got a question?
Yeah. It's my understanding that the D O T will not allow any more approaches off the state highway. There is a sort of an approach there, but they're not gonna allow them to use that.
Which one are you talking about?
Um, the big commercial property.
We're not, that, we don't even care about that.
Well, you're talk, they're talking about utilizing that approach, it, that won't be able to use. That's why they're going for this rezoning, that little sliver as commercial to use.
There's no approach into that lot, you're saying? I thought there was, wasn't there, Brittany? There's an approach onto that lot.
Off the highway?
Yeah.
Sixteen.
Highway Department has no approach permits on either property.
My understanding from the Highway Department is there is an approach off of here, if they.
The Highway Department has no approach permits on fail for either approach.
That, that's off Reno Gulch, that, but we're talking about the D O T approach off of here.
Three eighty-five.
Off of three eighty-five, there's an existing approach there, it's not built to commercial standards.
There's your guy right there.
Oh.
I have the area one. Is it this, right there?
So, there is an approach. Yeah. So. Yeah, and that, that, that's the approach that would be larger.
Yep.
If they, but it, it's not gonna happen today, so I just, if, if there's more concerns, maybe get ahold of the property owner and he can explain to you what he's doing over there, um.
The big picture is that they want to put a U T V rental sales there. So, they're gonna want to use that, rezone that for their business, and then that small approach on Reno Gulch. And then, that's where the bottleneck will be, because the U T Vs will be coming out of there with all the traffic on Reno Gulch. They won't come out onto the highway to then come up Reno Gulch.
Yeah, they'll come out right, he'll set, that's where they'll set them, they'll go up Reno Gulch.
Would, would anything stop them from doing that now? Well, they have the whole, the bigger piece, ain't it? That, they have the whole bigger piece right there for commercial, right?
Could they put that on that commercial?
So, as it sits right now, that larger nine acre parcel is zoned commercial, and U T V rentals and sales is a use by right in commercial.
They already do them there.
They could do that there now.
Okay.
They could.
So, you, either you're gonna come off that little approach, that little dirt one, or you're gonna come off a bigger one? I guess that choice is up to you guys, I mean, not really, but I mean, it's something to think about.
I would be safer with it.
Well, yeah.
But we got time to, to, to get further, develop into what's going on, so.
Thank you for your time.
Now, when, when is this coming back, so they know?
The next one, the twenty-first?
Next meeting, let's uh.
Twenty-first.
Yep.
The twenty-first, it'll be back here again. I guess the gentleman that owns it's out of town.
Where U T V things in Painton County is really getting to be a problem, you guys probably heard about people complaints.
We've had fires, we had a fire up there the other day.
Yeah.
Started by.
I know, they, it's, it's, it's legal, I guess we.
Well, it could be restrictions put on them, noise.
We'll have to go to the federal government.
We can't even get police to enforce drunk driving, because they don't have the manpower.
Yeah.
And pretty much everybody is drinking and driving.
Reno Gulch is, Reno Gulch and China Gulch, and out by the share where Ron lives, it's a serious problem. And it's got out of hand, nobody know, really knows what to do with it.
The A T V, the A T Vs are?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So, Rod, try to own the property next to the moonshine, see how that works.
I know, that's what I mean, Roger Road, Deer Road.
For the rentals.
If you're not there, tell them to get off your property, they're gonna just do it.
There's about, my brother lives right on the corner there, he's counted two hundred a day.
Wow.
It's crazy, but that's true.
Yeah, I could see if you were a property owner, let you.
And they turn around in his driveway, and they, they sat out there and decide where they're gonna go, and the dogs are all barking and.
Noise.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, I hope we helped you a little bit, so. We're, um, we have a motion to continue, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we'll move on to the next item.
Thanks, guys.
Which is what?
Megan Talmage, Planner. Agenda item D is, um, it's an appeal to the Director's decision um, for a setback variance in rural residential. Um, I met with the applicants, Dean and Shereen, on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five to discuss the location of a potential garage on their property. Um, rural residential zoning district requires a twenty-five-foot setback. Um, the applicants are requesting an eight-foot setback. Um, we did explore potentially alternative options. Um, the applicant does feel that this is the best option available to them. Um, but overall, they were advised that we would put them through this appeal process. Um, and um, overall, staff does recommend denial to allow a setback variance on the subject property as there's no special condition that exists to warrant this variance. Um, the applicant is here for any questions, otherwise I'm here as well.
Chair. One question for Megan. Anybody complain about the setback or anything about, on the garage that are the neighbors saying, you know, that's too close to them, or anything else?
No, I believe that the applicant has talked to their neighbors, it's a pretty friendly neighborhood, um, but they can answer that question if needed.
Thank you, but you haven't had any on file?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Dean, are you, or? Dean, are you, or? Yeah. Haas, if you're here, come forward.
Good morning, and thank you for considering our, our request.
And, and can you, like, tell me again, because for some reason I missed this footage?
Yeah.
Variance you're looking for.
Yes, what's your names, guys?
My name is Dean Haas, this is my wife, Sherry.
Thank you.
Sherry. Yeah, we've lived on this property since 2016, and, um, we have visited with the three neighbors that would essentially butt up to our properties, and accord, you know, the way the land kind of lies, it's really rolling, like our neighbor to the north, Keith Chase, he just put up a garage, uh, last year, and he has no plans of putting anything down it, because it is a gulch type of thing, or really rolling, low area. Uh, we chose this place because it's between two existing structures, and it, it's the most logical place. And I had Sam Brewer from Brewer Construction come out to get a bid on the concrete on this, uh, project, and he said there would be no, he should be able to, um, landscape it to where there would be no additional fill. There might actually have a little bit pulled off. Um, the other logical, we don't want to put it between the house and the Earl Court Road. I mean, that would make no sense at all. Um, the other place that you could possibly say, why don't you put it there? Um, there would be a, a lot of fill that would have to be brought in, a retaining wall, and there is a, um, between our existing driveway and the, there's a steel 30 by 20 structure, uh, there's a large pine tree, there just isn't enough width. We want a 32 by 32, so that we can utilize it for what we need to use it for.
Thank you. Chair.
Commissioner Hattcock.
I like a motion to approve the variance for the setback to eight feet.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion from Hattcock, a second by Roskineak.
Just a quick, um, input from staff. This is, um, to allow them, to allow them to submit the variance to our department.
Right.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
But I get, I guess if we get to that point, we don't, unless there's something really crazy, we wouldn't stop them from doing it, correct?
Yeah, so they'll still be able to, um, to apply for the variance, um, and then we would, staff would write up the report, we would come back in front of you.
So you gotta come here and apply for it? And then you gotta come back and get it approved?
We, we go through the appeals process to avoid the $545 fee off the bat on a situation where it may be denied. So we want an idea of which way the board would be leaning in order to take this in.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on, on the, Commissioner Dur, did you have something to say, or you just moving that microphone closer?
I'm getting ready to vote.
I'm trying to get on top of my game, guys, so, just, so, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Got one opposed? Got one opposed.
Okay.
So, four to one.
Four to one.
Okay, thank you.
Can we ask why I opposed?
Yeah, because I'm looking at the site location, and I could see why, you know, they're recommending a no. It looks to me like you have other places on your property to put the building aside from eight foot within somebody's property.
Do you want to look at the pictures?
No, not right now.
Okay. It comes down to cost and.
He's insignificant.
It passed.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Don't argue when you get in, right?
You're past. Thank you.
All right. Move on to item, uh, 15, or do we go back?
Come out of Board of Adjustment?
Consent agenda, there's only one item.
Come out of Board of Adjustment? My motion.
Wait, we have, can, okay, so we're done with this then, right?
Yep.
Okay, when, okay, we have a, a motion. Do we have a second? Roskineak is second. All in favor, say aye, Dur.
Aye.
So we are out of, uh, Board of Adjustments, and now we'll move back to item.
15.
Um, was it 14?
15.
You could either take 15A, which is planning still, just to hit that consent agenda, or you can move back to items from Highway Department 12.
Might as well just get the consent.
Highway probably made more sense.
Which one do you guys want to go to?
Now we're going to go to Highway and then back to the consent.
Planning.
Is that what we're doing?
15?
Number 12.
Okay. The consent agenda is actuated by one motion by the Board of the Board Items, as to request a board member or citizen to plan and zoning consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda, move to the, so, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Approve major planned unit development amendment review, P U R 2307, Blackout Resort LLC, Daniel Roth, with 25 conditions to review an, uh, existing PUD to allow additional recreational vehicle site on the property. So we have a motion by Hattcock.
Second.
And second by Roskineak. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we go back? Is that correct?
Item 12, right there, sir.
Okay, item 12.
Right here. So you're on track.
Items from the Highway Department. And that's Joe, who's been patiently waiting here. Sorry, Joe.
I understand your, uh, conundrum there, so.
Well, yeah.
You got that people waiting, and.
I missed that 10:30 deal up. Hopefully, Hattcock won't let that happen again.
[laughing].
We're on, Joe, you have the floor.
Uh, good morning, Commissioner. Uh, it's not morning anymore, good afternoon, Commissioner. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Uh, item in front of you, item A here is, uh, authorization to let our 2026 bridge preservation. Uh, these bridge projects were funded through the South Dakota, uh, Bridge Improvement Grant Program, um, referred to as BIG. Um, we were already received, uh, approval from the state to let these bridges. Um, those bridges are Forest Road, Lower Spring Creek Road, uh, Norris Peak Road, and Shields Road. Uh, we had, we plan to advertise, uh, and let these projects this fall, to hopefully get a competitive price for the contractors to construct these next year. Um, they are funded, or they are budgeted for in our 2026 budget that you guys just approved here the last, I believe it was last week. Um, so far, and just a little history on the BIG program, um, since 2021, when the wheel tax was implemented, um, we've received roughly $4.6 million, $6 to $8 million, uh, used directly for construction dollars, and then you add in the construction engineering, brings that total of roughly $5.3 million that, uh, we've received from the BIG program, um, towards our bridge preservation program. Um, and at last count, I believe, uh, when we started this, and when we implemented the wheel tax, we had over 20 bridges that were in poor condition, um, and I believe we're down to 10 or 11. So, um, I forgot to look that stat up, but I know we've, uh, made a, a large dent in these since the implementation, since you guys implemented the, uh, the wheel tax in 2021, so.
Commissioner Hattcock?
We authorize the Highway Department to advertise and let bids for 2026 bridge preservation for bridges, 52-310-66, 52-457-406, and 52-319-268, and 52-312-311.
We have a motion? I'll second the motion. Any, uh, conversation on the motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item B, authorization to purchase one new motor grader.
So, uh, in moving forward with our plan that was, uh, amended last year, uh, and voted on by you guys, our, we've got one new John Deere motor grader, uh, in our equipment purchase plan for 2026. The lead time is currently approximately six months. Um, we typically like to get these motor graders in January and February, so we can get all of our equipment switched over in time to maintain for the spring moisture, when we get the moisture, so we can maintain our roads. Um, this grader, the, the one that we're proposing to trade in, uh, we paid $316,000, uh, approximately, I believe it was $500, um, and we're getting a trade-in value of $190,500. Um, so owning this equipment and putting this plan into place, uh, it costs us roughly $126,000, excuse me, um, over the last seven years to own that machine, approximately $18,000 a year, or $2,000 a month, to own that machine, um, over the last seven years. So, um, our plan, uh, motor graders are all fully under warranty, um, and it's, uh, seems to be working, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskineak, sir.
So, Joe, how many hours on that trade-in?
Uh, roughly 3,600, 3,800, I believe.
So let's just assume it had 13,000. What would the trade-in value be?
Well, we have our RDO rep in the, in the audience, I don't know if he's willing to, to put a number on that, but.
My guess is probably hardly give it to him.
Yeah, and, and the, the nice thing about this is, there's still, you know, roughly 10, 12 months of, of warranty left in it, on the machine, um, so when the next buyer gets it, he's also getting a little bit of a warranty when he picks that up. So that's factored into that resale value, or that trade-in value.
That was a great program, to keep those under warranty, so, and it's, this is a testament that, uh, it's working.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dur.
So, Joe, in your 25 budget, did you budget to purchase a motor grader in '25?
We budgeted to purchase two motor graders in 2025. This purchase won't be delivered till 2026, which in 2026, we have budgeted for one motor grader, correct?
Good. So you budgeted two motor graders for this fiscal year?
Correct.
Did you purchase two?
Yes.
Okay. And so, when would you be paying for this purchase for '26?
We don't actually pay for anything until we receive it in our hands, and the delivery of this is slated for late January, February.
All right.
Chair.
Commissioner Hattcock.
We would authorize Highway Department to purchase one new 2026 John Deere 772P motor grader from RDO Equipment Company, Rapid City, South Dakota, in the model 423-80731, from Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract 011723-JDC.
Second.
We have a motion from Hattcock, second by Drews, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Um, South Dakota Federal Lands Access Program Grant Application, FLAP.
So, uh, this application comes in front of you. Uh, we were approached by, uh, a gentleman by the name of Andy Val, Andrew Valdez, I believe, um, is his name. He approached us, and, um, we've had a meeting with the Badlands National Park, the Buffalo Gap National Grasslands, looking for a project to, to, uh, submit for the, uh, the Federal Lands Access Program, or Program Grant. Um, and after some back and forth, uh, we settled on improving Sage Creek Road, uh, which is a north-south connector between Highway 44, so the scenic and interior area to the wall area. Um, if, the next north-south connector would be, uh, 160th, 161, that runs through New Underwood to get to the interstate. Um, or if you go to the east, it would be Bigfoot Road. Um, there's approximately 5.6 miles of Sage Creek Road that's not currently hard-surfaced. We base stabilized and hard-surfaced the, the remaining, or the rest of it, um, in 20, when was that shown, '21, '22, I believe? Um, '22, I think, is when we did that. Um, so, this grant would allow us to finish out that paved access and hard-surface the rest of that road, plus improve the, the base stabilization that we've already, um, done prior, and get it a little bit wider for the traveling public and the ag community, so.
So this, this, if, if you get this grant, that would fix that road?
Essentially, correct.
And it needs fixed, brother. I drove on it, man, I'm like, what am I thinking? It's pretty rough, so.
Yes.
Lady next to her.
So.
Chair.
You have a question? Commissioner Hattcock?
Just the young lady next to her, what's your name?
Jennifer Williams, Carol, and I'm the grant manager for the company.
Yes. Why I said that is because, uh, she's came up and got some pretty, uh, awesome grants this year for people on different areas, um, and this is one, um, that's going to make a huge difference for Pennington County, so thank you for all your help as well.
It, it'll be greatly needed, that, because if you Google that, it takes you down that road, if you're coming out of there, it takes you down that road, if you go through the Badlands.
Is there a bunch? With him.
He's taking me for a ride out there.
Yeah.
He didn't leave me there, that was the miracle.
It really blew your teeth in really well, on that road, but anyway.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Going to make a motion to approve the submission of the South Dakota FLAP grant application.
Second.
We have a motion from Dur and a second from Roskineak, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity to apply for that. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can we take a break for 10 minutes, before we go into the items from Human Resources that's going to be on our healthcare?
Okay, let's take a break.
Okay.
Everybody. We are on items from Human Resources, sorry, Sandy.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Sandy Sortland, Senior HR Manager. So we, uh, need to make some cha, some changes to our premiums and, uh, plan design, in order for us to move forward with open enrollment, which we'd like to start in about a week here. The memo, I'd like to thank Jorganen for his help. Um, I was out of the office last week, and he helped me work through this to get it all put together for you today. So we do have, um, our current premiums are listed in here, as well as, um, recommended, uh, changes for Option 1, 2, or 3. Option 1 is showing it as budgeted, there would be no budgetary impact, um, as proposed for the 2026 final budget, and there would be no changes to the existing employee and employer splits. Option 2, there would be no increase to the employees, but it would have an unbudgeted increase of approximately $64,000. This is if everyone currently employed with Pennington County were to enroll in healthcare. Our actual numbers are actually quite a bit lower, we have about 600 people enrolled in our insurance right now. And then finally, Option 3 would be adjusting, um, the employee employer split to be a little bit closer to industry standard. This has been recommended to us a couple of different times by Wellmark, who is our health insurance provider. This would have an unbudgeted increase of approximately $113,000. And again, that is the maximum amount of impact to the budget, if everyone who is currently a full-time benefited employee were to enroll in our health insurance. So we would like to start open enrollment next week on October 12, um, but we do need you to approve our plan design change and, um, a premium change, whether we have the 2% increase, which was already budgeted, or one of the other options that we've given you in the memo here. So I'm just looking for some guidance, so I can get our open enrollment started.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Dur. So Sandy, explain to me, I, I know that, and I see here that it says that the four-tier program was presented.
It was.
What kind of timeframe do you think you need relative to that, to figure that out, whether or not it's a workable tier or not?
Uh, we can make it happen, it's just not going to be able to happen this year. We have a lot of big rocks that we are working through right now, and so there's a lot of and so, there's a lot of internal things that we have to do for deduction codes, and we're trying to learn payroll and all of these other things, so that we can get these other initiatives taken care of. But we are planning on doing this for the 2026 year, so it will be effective in January of '27.
So, any idea of the timeframe it takes to go through that?
To actually make the split, I've been told it's about two months with everything from the start to the finish.
Okay. But you're saying you've been loaded up with other responsibilities?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Dur.
So, and then I think it's getting, take out the other responsibilities from HR, because there's going to be people taking over that responsibility on the payroll side of it. My understanding, because I believe anyway that I talked to you and Carol a little bit about this, but it's about uploading the individuals in, and then I believe that the sheriff's office is down to just one HR person at this point in time?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So, explain what it takes to upload this into the system and some of the nuances related to that.
I'll do my best. So, what has to happen is we have to take anybody who is currently listed as an employee-plus-one dependent and figure out, are they going to go to the employee-plus spouse, or are they going to move to family plan? Or will they then move to, are people coming out of family plan moving into employee-plus children? To do that is a lot of extra education for our staff, which we really don't have the manpower to handle this year. It's also a lot of build in the Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield system called Blues Enroll. It would take several extra weeks for them to get the plan built out in their system as well. So, when you look at all of the different pieces, it just kind of snowballs into a perfect storm of we just ran out of time this year to be able to do it.
All right. And the discussion about increasing, you know, the county's share at this point in time, we just gave the employees a 4.4% pay increase, and I'm not looking to absorb any more of the benefit cost. You know, I'd like to stick with what we've budgeted. And the, I think it's a conversation to have next year during the budget process to get the finances down to say, which I think we should look at, the splits that we have and what we're paying on those splits, and what would change is by adding this other tier in there, and then we would actually have those numbers to discuss what those percentages should be and what the county's share would be, because I think we are low, like, you know, on the family, you know, that's 63%, and adjusting that up closer to that, you know, 70% mark. But I think that all ties into having an idea as to what enrollment is going to be, and then doing those splits on what the cost is going to be. So, I mean, on the self-insurance fund, the county is already assuming a risk wherein, you know, if the fund is going into the red, that the only option we have, if we can do through premium increase, is to move money out of the general fund into that fund. And I understand, you know, trying to build that fund balance up, so, but I'm not, I'm not keen on changing anything other than what we've already budgeted at this point in time.
Chair.
Commissioner Hancock.
I met with Jordan yesterday, and he showed me the four options, took it home, and also decided that, I think, no change, keeping that 2% like we had for last year, after reviewing that at home and making that decision, because I also thought about if we have to end up making premiums different or a little bit higher, I don't think you should drop people lower and then go, okay, we're going to raise those again. So, I think they know what to expect as of this year. They know what to budget as of this year, and we did put some money into it. So, I think, I haven't heard so far any complaints from anybody, and they're not, you know, it's going to take some work for the changes of the other and for them to figure it out. So, it gives us time to leave it where it's at, at that 2%, and then figure out from there, because we'll have a different budget next year as well, ready to go for any changes we have to make.
And, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Dur.
Would you explain going from a 2OBS to a 1?
So, what happens with going from a 2OBS to a 1 is that currently, we have our employee-plus-one dependent. They have their own split-out out-of-pocket and deductibles. That creates two OBSs for everyone, for all of our plans. So, we have two plans with basically four OBSs, and it's a whole bunch of benefits language that, I mean.
OBS?
OBS, and I had to look this up. Is that in the memo?
It's not in the memo.
It's not?
It's an out-of-pocket structure, but it's.
Out-of-pocket benefit structure. So, thank you. Basically, what it is, is that this will change it so that it's just one out OBS. You have your single out-of-pocket deductible, and you have your family out-of-pocket deductible. So, if you sign up for the employee-plus-one dependent, you will follow the family out-of-pocket and deductible maximums. And it's, it makes all the processing and everything easier, so.
And currently, there's only two plans in South Dakota that are set up the way we currently have for 2025, and Wellmark's recommendation is that we get down to the one OBS. On the billing side and administrative side, it's very complicated for them to do those splits in our plan, because we have multiple splits. And so, getting into this, we're basically saying we're getting into the market structure by having one OBS for our plans and not multiple splits.
And this will give us a better foundation for that four-tier structure that we want to go to for the 2027 benefit year as well.
Mr. Dur, that was good presentation.
And, so, the other talking point that we have after, you know, we make a decision on this, talk about adding flexible spending.
Yes, I have some information to provide, so.
All right, good.
So, we're, we're going to talk about deductibles or something, you said?
There's really not anything to talk about the deductible. I just need the board's approval to move forward with moving to the one OBS versus the two we're currently on, and then also a motion for the benefit structure.
Option 1.
Or the premiums, sorry.
The option 1.
That would be no change to the budget, yes.
Okay.
So, I'm going to make a motion to approve Option 1, going to 1OBS as Pennington County's insurance premiums for 2026 benefit plan year going into effect, first paycheck of December of 2025.
We have a motion from Dur.
26, you mean?
Second from Hancock. So, any discussion on that motion?
First payment of 26, you mean, not 25.
December of 25.
You're paying a month in advance for the premium.
Never mind, sorry.
The percent of change, the EE dollars over here is what change it'll make monthly in somebody's.
In someone's pay period, yes. That's what that far-right column is.
Oh, that's a pay period, okay.
Yep, that's, yeah, that's not a monthly, that is a.
Yeah, which we have 52 pay periods, so, looking at about.
We have 26 pay periods?
How many?
26.
26. Half of 52. 26, huh, sorry. Okay. So, that's important note, because it's not, this doesn't turn into a month. This is actually more than a month, so, if you have.
If I could speak to that real quick as well.
26 pay periods.
Right. So, the biggest change that you would see here in the biweekly pay period would be for the family plan. If they took a 2% increase, it increases $7.59 per two-week pay period. In that same two-week period, you guys gave the 2.9% cost of living adjustment. For the lowest-paid county employee, that 2.9% would net them about $41 per pay period extra. So, it's not like they're losing out, taking a little bit more of the percentage increase.
And I think that was a concern that Commissioner Dur had risen. We don't want to get into that habit of, you know, want them to have a net take-home that's a little bit more sufficient. And then going forward, we can look at
the lowest rate.
other options that we can add to Blue Cross Blue Shield that, like, maybe self-insured type stuff and/or health.
Well, Chair, that was kind of the bottom line, was to look at basically $17 to $18 an hour, and how much would that really affect the person that was making that lower adjustment, $17, $18, which to me, there's no low, but still, on our pay scale, it is. Then it's like 40 bucks a month.
Okay.
Right?
Well, I was going to say it's an extra 41 per pay period, if that's just the COLA, not the step increases. And then so, per pay period, if they had the family plan, it would be an additional $7.60 per pay period for them for that. So, you're still netting positive $34 almost.
Oh, yeah. Moving forward, I just think it's something we need to look at on for the lower-end people that first come in here trying to make something happen.
Right.
Maybe there's, if we do this correctly, we can come up with a formula that's a little bit, because it's a lot easier for somebody making $110,000 a year versus someone making $40,000.
That's what you explain, if they make, if they, in a $40, like, they got to increase the $40 from the, remember the COLA and the step? Then it costs them $7 and something per paycheck. They'd get about a $40 increase. That's why I asked Jordan yesterday. So, they'd actually increase 37 something dollars, meaning we didn't want to take a percentage and then take, you know, most of that that we gave them for an increase and take it back basically to pay for their benefits. So, I think it worked out well, in a sense that, you know, we're still looking at the employee and trying to make the right thing decision for them as well.
Okay. Does everybody have a semi-firm grip on that?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries.
Good job, Jordan. And.
Chair, one more thing on healthcare.
So, we were asked to look at implementing a flec- excuse me, flexible spending account, which is considered an FSA. And what it is, is that it's a preloaded account that an employee also puts money into throughout the year that they can use for medical expenses, and the list of things that they can use it on is extensive. It is a preloaded account, but it does, it's a pre-tax deduction, so we would save money in taxes that we paid into the IRS. It would also allow our employees to save a little bit in tax dollars, and it gives them an extra padding, basically, of relief on some of their medical expenses. Some of the questions that had been brought up about financial impact and what happens if an employee leaves mid-year, the IRS is very specific that there is nothing that an employer can do to get that money back from an employee. Say they spend all of their FSA at the beginning of the year, and they leave mid-year. The IRS is very specific that there is nothing that the county could do to try and recoup that money back from them. However, it is more frequently seen that an employee will leave, and they haven't used everything that is in that FSA, and so they kind of balance each other out. You more frequently will see money going back to the employer that they can then redistribute to the other employees participating in an FSA, so it balances itself out. Usually, there is no, little to no cost for implementing an FSA, aside from the initial upload of the dollars to go into the accounts, because we're taking that money then back out of that employee's account or their paycheck as a pre-tax deduction to basically pay back the county for front-loading that money for them. They do have to use the money by the end of the year. We're the ones that decide what the amount is that will go into the FSAs every year. Usually, you want to go below whatever the IRS limits are. The IRS limits do change every year. What I need from the commission is approval to go ahead and implement this, and it is implementing another deduction code in our payroll system as well. So, we need to have that approval to be able to make this happen.
I'd like to look into it.
And, so, yeah, I brought this up actually when I was on the Healthcare Trust Board as to why the county, you know, did not operate a flexible spending account. And so, we had talked about it, and it was, you know, I believe, supported by the Healthcare Trust Board once it was discussed, and I think for the employees that choose to do like a high-deductible healthcare option.
We do have a health savings account already set up through Health Equity, and anyone who's in a high-deductible plan can participate in that.
And so, when you look at, you know, even using it for eyeglasses, but again, when you have those out-of-pocket and your deductible and your out-of-pocket maximum that you have to meet, it helps the employees to build that up. Particularly, they can change the dollar amount of that election. If they know they're going to have a medical procedure or surgery one year, they can put the minimum amount in required, and then they can hit the max. What is the max amount right now?
I don't have that figure in front of me.
All right. So, anyway, but the IRS, that's what that is. And so, yes, and I've managed a flexible spending account before, and typically, the employees will leave money in there and, you know, not front-loaded, because that money is available in January. And then front-loading that to Jordan to have it ready for the January budget cycle, since we're just setting it up the first time, because we had to put seed money in, you know, the account that you and I managed. And so, this is going to be separate from the self-insurance fund.
Correct.
It's going to have its own fund account, so when legislative audit comes in, you have to run all of that stuff so legislative audit can see, you know, money coming in and payouts going out, and what the, you have to do that end-of-year accounting for the fiscal, and then set what that rollover amount is for the employees. But I'm assuming you guys will do that through HR.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, and in essence, this is a custodial account, because this is the employee's money.
Correct.
And so, it's managed completely different from our self-insurance fund, where the county also, the employer, has some payments into it, so it's a completely separate fund.
Good. All right. Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve the HR office to manage the FSA for the employees.
We have a motion.
Second per discussion.
A motion from Dur, second by Hancock. Let's have a discussion on that motion.
Are we ready to move, sorry, Chair, are we ready to move forward, did you say?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Drews.
So, Sandy, can you tell me, was there a discussion by the former Trust Board relative to this, to the flexible spending?
Yes, there was.
And what was their opinion of it?
They asked us, that was, happened in July, and they asked the HR department to do a survey to see if there was interest from the staff, and we had good responses to the FSA survey, and yes, it is something that our staff want. But the board was dissolved before we could move forward with making a decision.
So, did you get, did you get the response to the survey back or not?
Yes, we have.
And what was that?
It's very favorable. Our staff would like us to provide another benefit for them.
Okay.
And now, my question, does everybody have to participate then?
No, this is voluntary.
Okay. So, if they know that they're going to have expenditures come up, it can be very, the list is extensive. I think it even goes into aspirins and Tylenols and.
It's incredible, yes. And that will be part of the education that we provide to our staff. We'll give them.
I think a little bit of the reluctance to do that before was the amount of bookwork it takes. So, but we're all willing to take that on.
No, and the good thing about it is, I mean, when the employees do that automatic payroll deduction, they're not paying their share of the payroll taxes on it, because it's tax-exempt. The county is not matching those tax dollars. So, every dollar that's put into it is, even though it's the employees', the money is a savings to the county, because we're not paying the payroll taxes.
Correct.
It stretches their dollar anywhere from 20 to 30% probably, their tax dollar, that they're using for that healthcare and help offset some of the.
Helps quite a bit.
You know, when you go into the store, you're buying all this stuff anyway.
And we already have one, I mean, we have an option for daycare, correct?
Yes, we do. We have a dependent care FSA already. It has not had seen, seen a lot of participation. We're hoping that we can get more people to participate in it. That one's a little bit harder to build up before you can start using it. I think we're going to see better participation in this instead.
All right.
Every dollar helps. Any other comments?
Can you just repeat that motion, please? I didn't get it all.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a motion to approve an FSA account to be set up and managed by the HR office.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Go on to the next item.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a great day. Walter, are you, sir?
Good, Commissioner. Pennington County Risk Manager, Walter McDuff. What I bring forward to you guys today is just, you guys approved this with the Building and Grounds Director a few meetings ago, but it was both joined together, so which would be the waiver that, and the fitness policy were put together, and when legal looked at it, they wanted it separated. And so, that's why I bring this to you, because we had to change it far as the policy itself. And so, I bring that to you guys, asking for your approval on the policy.
One of the changes, moving the waiver into the policy?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this particular item? Can we get a motion?
Move to approve.
We have, we have a motion from Roskinck and a second by Drews for approval. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Walter.
16.
Somehow I got out of where I was, okay. Items from Commission Office, TIF application, resolution comments, Amendment Number 3 to existing TIF, Homestead Street Designs. Okay, this is, so they have some changes to this TIF that they presented to us. They're looking for our input. Amendment Number 3 is discussed as the big one here. Jordan, did you read this over real well, or do you have a?
Not real well, but I did read it over a little bit.
Kind of summarize.
Yeah, from their memo here, they're saying specifically that this is Amendment Number 3 to TIF Number 84. And so, what it does is it changes the project plan, so that it's going to reallocate the unused project costs in order to extend Homestead Street to Valley Drive and to construct regional drainage improvements. So, that's really all this is, is just another amendment, but as you can see, the total cost of those improvements is estimated to be another $1.7 million. So, it's definitely not nothing, but I believe it's because they said they had extra unallocated project funds that they could now put into this project, as opposed to just letting the TIF end early.
Looks like they're going to use it for drainage improvements, which is, this is, this is where a TIF comes in handy. It makes good sense when you're attacking a problem that already exists. Over the years, that whole area up there got built without a lot of drainage management in it, so it's been wreaking havoc, anything down to, I would say, to the, to the south of that project. So, putting this in to have another detention pond, to me, is a great idea. And this is where, you know, the developer, government, community becomes conflicted, because it's very expensive. If you want to do this because of our terrain and being able to add this in, is going to save.
Amendment.
Yeah, it's going to save everybody money, especially us not having to come back and fix it, because they're fixing some problems that were created prior to their time. So, I'm good with that. But I, you know, I wish the city would honestly take more heed to that upfront when they're doing these TIFs to get more projects fixed that are problematic because of the silo-type of building, like, build this development, okay? And then we do all the infrastructure for this development. We don't oversize. We don't handle drainage. We don't do any of that stuff. And then we, but yet, we know in the future, there's going to be another site being built. It's like, we should keep in the account, if we're doing a TIF on it, then we should either fund for that TIF, or we should provide for the infrastructure, the drainage especially, because. because drainage has been one that we got away with for a lot of years because we were so sprawled out. But now it's, as we get a denser population, that drainage becomes more of an issue. So do we need any?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So TIFs are, are the premise behind a TIF is blight or economic for the most part. So this would be under the blight?
Yeah, this is one that's already been approved. So we're adding to it. They're adding to it, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
So they, yeah, they, they have, they had some money that they're redirecting that they had left over. So they're going to redirect it to a drainage basin that's to help mitigate.
Right. So relative to the commission, there's a route sheet. Jay, Jordan, you fill that out or how do, how do we go from here?
That, it all depends on whether or not you have comments that you want to respond. So the routing sheet is sent to us and then we can respond, the board can. And you can direct me to send a response if you've got some specific response that you want to send to this. It's always an option for you on these TIFs. And so I just wanted to make sure that the board as a body had that ability to respond to each of these TIF applications instead of individually as a.
I appreciate that, Jordan, because I think it was something that Gary pointed out earlier. It was like, we're all getting this individually and can we have it as a group?
Right.
So we can have the conversation now as a group and we can, if we like, we can direct Chair to send him a letter and says, you know, we don't appreciate what you're doing, but this is, this, this in my, on my thought is, is a good way to spend TIF money. I mean, it actually, it favors the community.
I didn't, I didn't look at size or building that drainage basin, but, or retention pond, but it's something in that area. It's up north, just before it hits and that area and ending in all that area. As Jerry already knows, probably been, been in there now. That's where it's all coming to. So anything up north that we can, you know, like Wyvenbach said, building a retention pond is good. Anything that's going to help us with the drainage that's coming down south is going to be a plus for the county. So I don't know, say something nice this time.
Say something nice. But we just tell them, we.
Just don't say anything.
Basically that we, you know, it would be nice to send them something so they know we're reading them too. Because the last letter that we sent them went a long ways when we, as a, as a commission decided that we would address some of our thoughts and send it to them. They, they actually took it to heart and so they're working on ways to try to direct.
Some of those funds.
Yeah, some of their funds through, you know, to make up for some of the funds that we're not receiving. So it did make a difference. So if they know that we appreciate, you know, getting this information ahead of time. And so I think in this case, it'd be a positive note, say, we appreciate the heads up and we think that the drainage is definitely necessary in, in moving forward. That these are definitely, you know, drainage or infrastructure that needs approval, needs repair or something we can really get behind because otherwise, when we pass away or whatever and we're gone, there's going to be another, somebody else dealing with this thing, so. Something to notice, something positive to them that we've acknowledged it and we appreciate, we, we concur with the use of this going there. That we know, they, they know we're on top of it too. We're not just, you know, throwing a bomb at them and running away, so. Everybody can.
Yeah, I guess my comment on the follow up is formally, they never responded to our letter formally.
Right. They haven't. But, but the one thing nice, if they've had conversations with me about it or they've brought it up in meetings saying, hey, we're working on some things. So I could get them to respond formally, I guess.
Because I think one of the things we asked for, if I recall correctly, was, you know, that not just getting, you know, these documents, but on major TIFs. And I don't even think we specified major, that, you know, somebody would come here and present to the commission.
Having like an executive summary meeting, okay?
So for example, you know, Liberty Land, that's a huge.
That would have been good to know because.
It would have been nice if, you know, they would have taken the time out. We were responding to it. But, you know, coming forward and a question, I heard it on the radio this morning on Liberty Land. So getting back to Mr. Ellsworth's comment, they set the election for January and now the city is going to do that election. We're not, correct?
Cindy got that question. Cindy explained to them from what I understand, I haven't talked to her about it, but I was going to. And she, you know, with a move and everything. To say that it was delayed is crazy. I mean, because they just did the petition drive. And then all of a sudden, they want Cindy to spend her time to set up an election. Well, that takes time. It's not, you know, all the other elections are planned way ahead of time, within years ahead of time. So I didn't appreciate him, the comments being made about being delayed when the reality is she just found out about it. She's in the middle of a move. She's got, we've got a lot of stuff going on. There can be no expectation other than the fact that when can you fit this in? And I think she's accommodating them the best she possibly can. And she made that comment publicly.
Does the city do elections?
No, we, I mean, that's the other option, I think, is.
I didn't think so.
But I don't think the city has a problem with it. I think this is the first I've heard of it being an issue because the people that pass the petitions obviously would like the election the next day. But that's not the reality of it. The reality is you got an auditor who has a lot of other duties to do. And when you go through and all of a sudden you just say, hey, you want to have an election? She's like, yeah, I agree with you, we'll, we'll do it. But it's going to have to happen within a timeframe, that's reality. You've got the holidays coming up, you got.
Right.
So I think that comment kind of throws the county and the auditor especially under the bus, which is.
Yeah. So Kara, when are you going to do that election?
Probably next week, I don't know. Just kidding, just kidding. I don't think.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought it up again because I was going to make a comment or sometime about it because it just, it's not the case in any way, shape or form that it's being delayed. There was no set timeframe when it was supposed to happen. It was dropped on her desk as to hap, as to happen. Because you can't really plan for it if, first of all, if you don't know it's going to, if it's going to be, if they're going to get the petitions to do it. Secondly.
Knowing they cost money.
Yeah, it's, it's like somebody just coming here and dropping a bomb and it happens. You know, I could clean this up, I guess I'll clean it up.
We're on commission items.
We are, we're on items from commissioners?
Yes, sir.
We don't do an executive session today?
Just to confirm, sorry, just to confirm, no, you, you want me to send a response for that TIF? Is that correct, the board?
Yeah, just send them a response, I would concur.
Okay. All right. Just making sure that that was.
We feel that that's a proper.
Yes, I don't think I'll need a motion, just wanted to, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
We're doing executive.
So, Mr. Chair, you going past 17?
I'm, I'm trying to get my thing back here because it went. Mine went, mine went crazy. Mine went off.
It's items from Chair and Commission.
I know that Commissioner Drews has some things he wanted to talk about on this.
17.
Yeah, but didn't we have a, we don't have an executive session of them normally?
We do after this.
Oh, we do after this? That's completely, you know, up to you, Mr. Drew, if you want to have a conversation now.
I do.
Okay.
I do. Mr. Chair.
Let's do that thing, okay.
So my concern under item 17 is that the September 29, 2025 special commission meeting, Commissioner Hadcock accused me of sending an unprofessional email, even calling it snarky. When I asked who it was sent to, she would not say. She said she would provide me a copy of the email. She did not send me a copy. And Chairman Wyfenbaugh told me last Thursday, it was an email I had sent to Commission Director Jordan Nieb in preparation of our scheduled budget meeting on September 19th. The email from me to Jordan on September 17th, which I had also copied Commissioner Roskineck as I felt he would want similar information on September 17th reads, "When we gather Friday for working on the budget, I would appreciate it if at the outset, we can receive a rundown of the actual position we are in after meeting yesterday. Revenue anticipated versus unanticipated expenses. The motion to not fund current open positions for budget purposes does nothing, in my opinion, to drive toward a balanced budget. Most, if not all, those positions will be filled and then we will need to find the dollars to cover those positions. This change of moving the budget to the commission has not worked well, in my opinion. Most of it is very confusing and difficult to understand. Maybe in another year, it will become clearer, but doing a budget in previous years under Auditor Cindy Mueller worked well in comparison. Has there already been an anticipated new bond payment added to the 2026 budget expenses? I've heard brief discussions, but not understanding if that has been added." Gary. I did receive an email from Jordan back responding to my questions. But to say that my email was unprofessional or snarky by asking the person who's our commission director a question is beyond my belief, I think. I've gone through this before with Commissioner Hadcock, making untrue accusations of me, and I simply can't allow those type of accusations to stand. Thank you.
Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, hold on before we. And I, I know where this is going and I want to have this conversation. And what we're looking at is trying to move the commission forward into, in a, in a positive manner. And I know that my job as a chair has been to try to direct some level of traffic. So when we have this conversation, I'm okay with that. But let's, let's be open and honest about it and let's, I mean, I read the, I read the, the letter. And, you know, if you generally read it, yeah, it's not an over, there's not an undertone. But if you understand all the dynamics, there's, there is an undertone to the letter. I read some letters that were printed to Davis about political posturing. What I've seen before I came on this committee was political posturing. I'm not a political animal. I, I, I do this because it comes from my heart. And I just, I want to, I want to stay on that same path. I want us to, to do what our, I mean, it was brought up earlier about our commission's mission statement. I want us to stick to that and stick together the best we can. We're going to have disagreements, there's no doubt about it. But if we undermine each other's authorities or the staff's authorities in a manner that, you know, like I, you know, I just appreciate we're all upfront with it and understand that I have no ulterior motive when I'm up there making decisions. I think at one time on this commission, that, that conversation was, was made that, I mean, when I get here, most of the time, I, I have very little conversation with you guys. I, I try to answer you, text you, do what I can because I want to, I want to make sure that, because the, the good thing about a commission is the diversity in the ability to work together and come together in the midst of adversity. We spent a lot of time on a budget that was, I mean, today was a proof positive of how things can work if we, we're going to have to give it some time. Yep, I know it can be, you know, tough and confusing at times, I get that. That part I understand. But it does us no good to have conversations with the staff or the other elected officials that undermine, in any way, shape or form from any one of us undermine the commission as a whole. When we make a decisionary as a whole, I'm hoping that generally support those decisions. You know, I get that sometimes it's just too hard to support a decision, I get that.
Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Hadcock.
Well, I appreciate that. I just didn't understand why you sent it to Cindy Mueller. I didn't send, understood.
I didn't send that to Cindy Mueller.
You did, it says it right here, you did. You did.
When I sent to Jordan, I sent to Cindy Mueller?
Yeah, says right here. I have the email. Okay, so you didn't.
From Cindy?
Uh, no, you sent it to her.
But you have my email that I sent to her.
You sent it to Cindy.
Since from you to Cindy Mueller.
Yep. Why would you send those two things to a commissioner and a department head?
I didn't, I didn't send it to Cindy.
Huh, who did?
I, I don't know. I didn't send it to Cindy.
Has your name on it?
All right, listen.
It doesn't have.
Okay, no, okay, so.
It does not have my name on it.
Oh. I wonder who sent that to him then? So my issue was.
The only thing I sent to Cindy is I, I asked Cindy if she would have time to meet the following day with Commissioner Roskineck and myself to help us understand the budget better. That was the only thing I sent to Cindy.
So here's a question from me. So how many times did you meet with Jordan to understand this budget this year? Gary, could you tell me that?
I'm not going to sit here under inquisition because it's something that you're trying to prove that.
Oh, I'm not proving it, I know. You know why I know? Okay, let me, let me finish.
Because the voices in your head that you tell me about are talking to you.
I'm, I'm speaking now.
Mr. Chair.
This is not the first game. This has nothing to do with Jordan. This has to do with the games Mr. Drew has played. I've been in these games with Mr. Drew when he said he hasn't done anything. I have another commissioner that has watched your games with me and has filed on you before as well. So from the beginning to the end of these conversations, you take employees or you take commissioners and you play these games with them. We started out this in an interview, all the way to your snarky comments when it wasn't employees, all the way to here.
I, I would ask that, that you stop this. And if you want to have a further conversation, I'm glad to have that.
Yeah, in executive session now.
But for her to continue to make accusations against me is unbelievable.
Mr. Drews, okay, Wyfenbach, let me, let me say one thing. Let me say one thing. When Mr. Drews got in my face and filed a false accusation on code of conduct, that was on the dais and that was filed. Jay Alderman told me to be the bigger man and not file it on you. That was on the dais that I had said that with another commissioner as a witness. Mr. Drews, this is not your only person. You have done this to other people in this.
Mr. Chair.
All right.
County.
Okay, I'm going to.
And they have filed.
Can I allow this to continue?
Yeah, no, I'm not, you know, Commissioner Drews, I asked you earlier if you wanted to handle this in executive session because we, we knew there's volatility here that's going to happen.
No, because he doesn't want to know the truth. He only wants to know what he wants to think and say stuff about me, right? Mr. Drews, that's your game.
Probably not a good conversation to have on the dais. I allowed it to start.
I'm tired of Mr. Drew's game, sir.
Yep, I, I get.
False accusations from him and other board members that have been on here have been going on from me and other employees and me for a while, and I'm tired of it.
I'm getting to, I'm getting to the bottom of that too. I've been doing an investigation on it. So I will have a conclusion in my investigation shortly. I've done a lot of work on it, so, so we'll get to that conclusion too. I preferred to have it in executive session that we could, way.
I would, I would have preferred that too, but that isn't the way it started a week ago Monday.
Right, right.
It started out here with her accusing me.
So tell the truth on the dais and quit making stuff up.
All right. Yeah, I think now that it's probably aired more publicly than what does us any good.
Yeah, Mr.
But go ahead, Commissioner Drew.
So I'm, I'm going to make a comment that, and I'll take it and I'm going to follow it up in the back. But I don't appreciate reading that email in public that you sent to Jordan because there's more to discuss about that. And if that would have.
Appreciate me reading it?
No, because if it would have been done to the previous commission manager, those are some of the same things that got filed on Commissioner Hadcock. So I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for personnel and legal.
All right, move to go into executive session. Have a motion.
Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
We have a second to go into executive session?
That was seconded by Hadcock.
Okay, sorry.